All right. Good afternoon. How's everybody doing today? Good? You're all good? All right, our chairman's on the way up. I saw him just pull in, but we're going to go ahead and get started on this regular workshop on October the 25th, 2022. Let the record show, we started at 1:07 PM. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is your 2023 State and Federal Legislative Priorities Workshop. You'll see that we're joined here by our state and federal teams who work so diligently and so hard to represent our interests before the federal and state governments. We appreciate you being here. And with that, I'll hand it over to Andy, who will do the brief introductions, although nobody at the table needs an introduction. We'll do it anyway, and Andy can take it from there. So Andy Johnson.
Thank you, Vince. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be back once again to present our Legislative Priorities Workshop. As you all know, and as Vince alluded to, this is our annual workshop where the Board provides important guidance to staff and to our county lobbying teams on policy and funding priorities during the 2023 legislative session, as well as over the next year in Congress. And of course, speaking of our county lobbying teams, as Vince mentioned, as you'll see around the table, we're joined today by Jeff Sharkey, Taylor B., Lena Juarez, our state lobbying team, Vicki Cram, Sarah Vilms, our federal lobbying team from Squire, Patton, Boggs, and you'll hear from each of them in just a moment. Commissioners, just a quick overview of what we'll be covering today. I will start off the workshop by discussing our proposed funding requests for next session in support of Leon County projects. We'll then discuss our proposed state and federal policy priorities for the coming year. And along the way, you'll hear from Jeff about the major policy issues we anticipate heading into the 2023 state legislative session. And Vicki and Sarah will provide an update on what we expect in the coming months as the 117th Congress comes to a close. As always, Commissioners, we will plan to just hit the highlights. All of the information that we present today is discussed in full detail in your workshop materials, but of course, please feel free to stop us at any time if you have any questions. And of course, we'll be sure to wrap up our presentation with plenty of time for the Board to discuss and to answer any final questions that you may have. So Commissioner, starting with our list of appropriations requests, as you know, each year, the Board establishes a list of Leon County projects for funding requests to the Legislature. The list that you see on this slide shows the requests that we are proposing for next session. As you may recall from previous years, Commissioners, I'll take a moment to note that by and large, most of the grant funding that we receive each year for specific county projects comes through existing executive agency grant programs. For example, many of our transportation projects receive funding through FDOT's Work Program. We've also had several septic-to-sewer conversion projects supported by grants through FDEP. And of course, as you know, we coordinate with all of our partner agencies throughout the year to get our county projects aligned with these grant programs. And I'll just note also, on page five of your workshop materials, you'll find an extensive list of these county and blueprint projects that we anticipate aligning with these existing grant programs. Now, with that said, the Legislature does fund a smaller number of local projects each year directly through line item appropriations in the state budget. And the projects that we recommend for this list each year, which you see on the screen before you here, are those that are most likely to be successful in that process. Specifically, we've seen in recent years a trend toward disaster preparedness projects, like the first one on this list, which involves installing backup generators at critical Leon County facilities. We've also seen economic and workforce development projects like the Leon Works Initiative get funded by the Legislature. And each year, the Legislature does set aside a pot of funding for local water projects, like the last three that you'll see on this slide. So moving on to our proposed policy priorities for next legislative session, many of these are going to be familiar to you, Commissioners, from recent years, from having been included by the Board as part of our legislative priorities. I'm going to go over each one of these just briefly, but of course, again, stop me at any time. We'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. First one that you see on this list, Commissioners, advocating on behalf of the nearly 20,000 Leon County residents who are state employees is a perennial priority of the county. Last year, as you'll see noted in your workshop materials, the Legislature included a little over 5% across the Board pay raise for state employees in the state budget, as well as funding to bring all state employees pay up to $15 an hour. As always, Commissioners, we'll continue to advocate for legislation and funding that benefits our state workforce and oppose any reductions to state employee benefits. Second, during your March 22nd workshop earlier this year on the Leon County Detention Facility inmate population, Commissioners, the Board directed staff at that time to work with the Florida Association of Counties on a policy proposal that would place a limit on the amount of time that a person charged with a felony offense in awaiting sentencing can be detained in a county jail. And as you might recall from that workshop, Commissioners, when the felony inmate population grows, just as a high-level summary, more inmates are detained for longer periods of time in county jails, which leaves fewer beds available to accommodate new offenders. And this, of course, places additional fiscal pressure on counties to fund jail operations and facilities. So at this time, Commissioners, we have submitted this policy proposal to FAC. It was considered by their Health, Safety, and Justice Committee during their policy conference last month. At that time, the committee directed FAC's staff to get feedback from the Florida Sheriff's Association and other relevant partners, and bring it back for their consideration during legislative conference, which will be coming up end of November, beginning of December. We will, of course, continue to keep the Board updated on this issue. As you know, we do recent, I'm sorry, weekly legislative updates throughout legislative sessions, so we'll keep the Board apprised of how that issue evolves. And at the bottom of this slide, Commissioners, during your June 14th, 22 meeting, the Board directed staff to include policy priority in this workshop to support a funding request from the Florida Civil Rights Museum Incorporated, a citizen group who is interested in developing a statewide civil rights museum here in Leon County. Next, Commissioners, just a few issues on this slide that, again, you may recall from recent years. In 2020, the Board considered a status report on a Confederate monument that's located at the state Capitol complex. As you may recall, based on the Board's previous direction, we have reached out several times to the state to start a discussion and explore any options that might be available for potentially relocating that monument. Unfortunately, we haven't received a response back from the state. So for the past few years, the Board has included a legislative priority to advocate for, basically bills, legislation that would require the relocation of the monument. And we continue to recommend keeping that on the list. It's been filed a few times in recent years. Senator Rosley and a few other members of the Legislature have supported this issue. Obviously, it hasn't gotten across the finish line, so we recommend continuing to include that on this list. Next, Commissioners, also in 2020, the Board approved a resolution in support of establishing May 20th Florida's Emancipation Day as a state holiday. The Board also established that day as a county holiday, making Leon County the first in the state to do so. There have been several bills filed in recent years that would formally designate May 20th as Florida's Emancipation Day statewide. Again, they haven't passed yet, but we anticipate that similar legislation could be filed again this year, and we're proposing to keep this issue on a priorities list to continue to advocate in support of that legislation. And then last on this slide is to support the expansion of Medicaid eligibility in Florida, as provided under the Affordable Care Act. Each state has the option of whether or not to expand Medicaid under the ACA. Florida is one of only 12 states at this time that hasn't done that yet. Again, this is an issue the Board has prioritized in recent years, and we continue to recommend the county's support for this issue. Final slide on legislative policy issues before I hand it off to Jeff on Amtrak restoration. As we've noted in your workshop materials, Commissioners, Louisiana, Mississippi, Alabama continue to make progress toward restoring passenger rail service along the Gulf Coast Route in the next few years. However, Florida continues to not be a member of the Southern Rail Commission, which is a coalition of states that have joined in support of restoring passenger rail service east from Mobile. Florida has not joined those efforts to extend the service east from Mobile. So again, we recommend continuing to keep this issue on our state list, as well as the federal list, which we'll see in just a moment. Next is the annual issue of concealed weapons on college and university campuses. I say annual because we've seen bills filed in each of the last several legislative sessions that would allow people who have a concealed weapons permit to carry firearms into college and university facilities, which is currently prohibited by state law, however, which the county has also opposed this legislation. Again, an annual issue. It seems to come up each year in the Legislature, and as such, we would continue to recommend keeping this item on the list for next session. Second to last, at the request of the Leon County Supervisor of Elections, last year, the Board included a priority in support of a new public records exemption for elections personnel. We've checked in with the SOE's office. They continue to request the Board's support for this issue in 2023. And finally, as we do each year, Commissioners, we recommend the Board's support the Florida Association of Counties legislative platform, which, again, FAC will finalize at their legislative conference in early December. And that, with that, Commissioners, that rounds out our proposed state policy issues. With that, I'll hand it over to Jeff for a preview of what we anticipate in 2023.
Well, thank you, Andy. Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to be here and talk about where we are today with last year's legislative efforts and, of course, heading into the 2023 legislative session. I know it's probably something that all of you missed. We're in a campaign season. I don't know if any of you have noticed that in town here, but that's certainly been dominating our lives and what's going on around the state in terms of this election cycle. Obviously, we have a big governor's race going on. House and Senate members are all over the state. We met with several of them today that are coming through town. As part of that, we will see a new leadership in the House and the Senate, a new incoming Speaker, Speaker Paul Renner from Palm Coast, Senate President Pasadomo from Collier County, Naples. We met with them last week, actually kind of talked through some of their issues, and I want to just kind of share a little bit of that. They're anticipating, obviously, a very vibrant election coming up here. Vibrant would be the right term, I think, maybe a little on steroids. A lot of key issues going on, but I can tell you, just talking to Senator Pasadomo, her number-one priority is affordable housing, attainable, livable housing. We, our firm does a lot of work in that space. It's a big issue everywhere in the state. If you take a look at, obviously, the impact of what's, I'm sure we're all paying attention, and we're concerned about Hurricane Ian and its track devastating to southwest Florida, as you all know. She is from that area. She's been touring it, you know, with the governor and legislative leaders, as well as the president and FEMA the last couple of weeks. So that issue, the property damage issue, Taylor, what's the property damage impact is?
North of $40 billion.
So for her, affordable housing infrastructure is super important. For Speaker Renner, he's more kind of supporting private business solutions to issues around the state, big on infrastructure. He's a former naval engineer, but we had a great working relationship with him and his new staff, both the House and the Senate, his chief of staff. So we anticipate a very positive working relationship with them. Let me talk a little bit about, obviously, the kind of key issues that are going to be emerging, are emerging, actually, that are going to be heard soon. Obviously, we have the election early November, then everybody comes to town, all the legislators come to town for organizational sessions, where they get sworn in, develop those committees. We've been through this before. We'll be meeting with not only our local delegation, we'll see how that plays out here locally, but newly elected House and Senate members from around the state. Then, as you've all heard, the whole property insurance issue has become, you know, again, at the top of the agenda for the governor, for the House and the Senate. As you may remember, they passed some legislation in a special session post-last session. Property insurers are leaving the state. Citizens is increasing their policy base by thousands and thousands a day. That's unsustainable. There's an assessment built into that process that could affect everybody in the state of Florida. So they're really looking for very strong solutions that are market-based, but that allow homeowners to really afford, because it's really tied into this whole affordability of homeownership over the state. That's going to be a top issue, certainly, as well as affordable housing. Couple of, so insurance stabilization, hurricane recovery, of course, is a big issue, and FEMA's on the ground. And we'll talk a little bit about the budget. You know, I think we went through last session, there are certainly some substantive, important issues that the Legislature is addressing. There's a certain number of kind of, the term "cultural war" issues. We were certainly part of that agenda last year. I know I won't go into all of them. If you watched that debate last night, you heard about a lot of them. But there's a couple, I think, the data privacy issue will be back, which is really an issue for business community, as well as the kind of data privacy advocates. We anticipate that what was hurt two years ago will come back again this year. There's some tort reform issues that I know that Speaker Renner wants to discuss. They believe, and I think part of the previous insurance efforts, legislative efforts, are all about, are all about property, about property roof repair, assignment of benefits issues that they think, and probably are, increasing the cost of property insurance coverage. There's a lot, Florida has 14% of the roofs of the, in the state of Florida, 70% of the litigation takes place in Florida. So that, they believe that's driving a part of that. So Speaker Renner is going to be very focused on tort reform for, to assist in the property insurance industry. The, I think, as Andy pointed out, you know, we've heard rumors, if you watch that debate last night, the death penalty issue in Parkland, I think, maybe emerging. Governor wants to change the way that state law reads on jury decisions on the death penalty. Open carry for guns, you know, is probably going to be surfacing, kind of tracking Texas, which is, I think, certainly something I think we're all concerned about. The right-to-life abortion issue certainly could surface as well, in terms of refining, defining, post-Roe v. Wade, how states can handle this. So wanting to get too much of that stuff. Couple of, let me shift gears here, kind of set the stage. Because of the federal, and I know the county has been a beneficiary of this, the amount of federal money that's come to the state over the last three years is, you know, is a remarkable amount. We met with the, Andy Baker, the head of EDR, the state economist, a month ago. They believe they've got $17 billion in reserves. I mean, that's, you know, typically, it's $4 billion, $3 billion, $6 billion, $3 billion. All of that federal money has come in. Revenue estimates up, I think Andy pointed this out in his report. We'll probably see, you know, $5-plus billion in new revenue that wasn't estimated. So there's, you know, there's money there. They're still trying to...
However, there's Ian.
Yeah, of course. And I was gonna say, then there's, you know, there's the cost of repair in the end, and anticipating, excuse me. You know, what a guy. Amazing. Am I on? Or should I do that all again? I don't want to do that again. But, so, listen, we're excited. You've got a, listen, you've got a great team here, and Andy Johnson, the leadership here, and your leadership, of course, is very important. You have a very strong voice over across the street, and it's a principled voice, you know, it's an honest voice, and it really speaks for your constituents. And I think that's super important, and we're proud to carry that message over there. We don't always win, but I think we put up a good fight on behalf of the county, and look forward to doing that this year. So anything you want to add, Taylor, Lena? I think we introduced Lena, but Eli Nortellus is not here. There is, there is. Part of our subcontracting team, so we're...
Jeff, I want to thank you for that overview. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Welch, what I'd like to circle back to is an announcement of what our 1, 2, 3, what is we lining our gun power up for? What specifically is you going to get for us? And a game plan that has our tier 1, 2, 3, 4, whatever. And I hadn't looked at the legislative roadmap, but it looked like it's about to be a sweep in total red over there. And do we have any chance of securing? Those are the concerns I want to circle back to, but first, I want to go down the desk, and Commissioner Welch, and Commissioner Minor. Okay, Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate your time. Just a couple of questions to you, Dr. Sharkey, on Senator Pasadomo's emphasis on affordable housing. You know, obviously, we feel those impacts here, as I assume we do all over the state. I think that's good that she's going to focus on that as a priority. What does that mean in practicality? Are we going to not raid the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for once? Are we going to actually create meaningful funding to try and help that out? Because like you said, when we talk about the property insurance stuff, now with the hurricane, I mean, we've got all this money sitting in reserves that's really federal money. What kind of meaningful legislation do you think we will see? And will it originate in the Senate? I mean, what will she have? Do we anticipate that the Senate will be able to, under, if that's her priority, actually create meaningful change?
Hi. I've known Senator Pasadomo for a long time, and I, you know, I'm kind of in the affordable housing development business as well over the years. So I've met with her in Collier County for you. So, meeting with her last week, she was very clear. This is her number-one priority. She can never get any affordable housing built in Collier County. So she's, and I met with her chief of staff and their team earlier in the week. Don't misrepresent any of this, but they're putting together a kind of very comprehensive, what they call livable housing, piece of legislation. She said, "I'm going to pass it. This is my priority. I'm going to pass this." It includes a wide variety of things. It includes, you know, it includes fully supporting Sodowsky funding. It includes the possibility of additional funding out of the doc stamps unrelated to the Sodowsky. It was referenced at $100 million a year for some transformative and innovative types of projects. It includes a whole variety of tools for local governments to incentivize both private sector folks to provide affordable workforce housing units as part of a market rate development, expedited permitting, fee waivers, you know, across a range of things that probably aren't, you know, school impact fee waivers potentially, you know, should you choose to do it, giving the local governments. So, as well as, one of the things she pointed out, and it's already on the books, that, you know, local governments are supposed to do an inventory of vacant property, right, for affordable housing. The county does that. We actually am on the Housing Finance Authority, thanks to, thanks to Mission Maddox, and so we deal with that all the time. But really kind of putting that on steroids, particularly in urban areas, where, you know, you've got, like St. Pete, there's no multifamily zone land left. And if there is, it's snapped up like that because somebody wants to build a 30-story tower. So being able to go vertical, you know, above strip malls. So she was, it was very innovative. I've never, you know, I've dealt with this a long time. She said, "Here's the package." She said, "Here's the package. It's going to be wide and broad. If you've got good ideas," this is coming to your point, "if you've got ideas that would help, give them to me. We'll see if they can fit in." Same thing her chief of staff said. So that package, that piece of legislation is being developed. I haven't seen it. It'll probably roll out here in November, in terms of a framework. But, you know, it's pretty exciting, frankly, I mean, in the space, because it is, like you said, it's happening everywhere. The price is everywhere. And when I met with Speaker D. Renner, Speaker Designate Renner, not necessarily his top priority, but he said, "Listen, that Senator Pasadomo's priority, I'm all in. I'll support anything she wants to do." So I think really for the first, you know, I've never seen a kind of a real comprehensive approach like this done. So to that point, and we can, you know, chat with Shinkton and everybody else, if there are tools that you think would be helpful, that are innovative, you know, we'll be happy to carry them over there. I think we've got a great relationship and knowledge of what they're trying to accomplish. Happy to help.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I follow up?
Commissioners, I want for you to be mindful that our lobbyists from Washington, D.C. are here, and we are halfway down. And I know we, not that Jeff is local, but they are not. And I want to make sure that we afford them every opportunity to tell us the more distant probabilities of our accessing money.
Just real briefly, then, I just, I appreciate that, and I assume that that dynamic will be good between the speaker-designate and the Senate president-designate, and they can be productive. My other question, more to Andy or whoever, but obviously, as I look at the projects for executive agency grant funding, you know, the Centerville Trace Septic to Sewer is high on my list, but it's way down on this list. So I'm assuming this list is, it's not a priority list, it's just an alphabetical list based on the type of project?
That's correct.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Minor and Commissioner Cummings, and we will move to our federal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be quick, because I know we are under a tight timeframe. Two main quick questions. On page five of our agenda packet, you've got the list, Table 1, which is the list of legislative funding requests, both the line item appropriation requests and the executive agency grant funding. The second section of that table, which has the executive agency grant funding, all those are the competitive discretionary grants. Is that correct? Okay. So the formula-based grants are, they're not on this table?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, there are formula-based grants, and there are competitive discretionary grants on there as well.
Okay, okay.
And those are existing programs, again, you know, we know that these are Leon County projects. They're in our CIP. We've got funding allocated for them. And we know they do align with existing grant programs that are funded each year, whether they be competitive or discretionary.
Gotcha. How's the process going to work with this? Because I can't imagine, you aren't going to fill out applications for all of these, but rather, how are you going to whittle it down to maybe the manageable number? How much was it, five or six, and then try to lobby with the executive branch on that?
We will absolutely intend, especially for the competitive ones that require, you know, grant prospectus, you know, full project scope, et cetera, those sort of things. Our intent is to apply for as many of these as we can throughout the year as the NOFOs come out. The formula-based ones kind of have their own, like the FDOT work program has its own process or thing, but that's absolutely our intent.
So it's basically just trying to keep your options open as long as you can during the session, and then working with the governor's office to try to keep those options open, and then see which ones...
Correct. And then, depending on what happens during legislative session or in Congress from time to time, new grant programs are created, which we can't foresee until it happens, sort of thing. And so as those come up, you know, our approach is to, again, look at the county projects that we have in our budget, in our CIP, and to see what aligns with any new grant programs that are created. And then we, you know, of course, bring agenda items back to the board to seek your direction on...
Sounds good. The final question I had was, you know, last year, the Big Ben Continuum of Care had a legislative request for funding, operational funding, that would make up for the reduction in CBDG grants, that they had a reduction in a couple of years ago, I think, what Vince was telling me during my briefing. That was adopted by the legislature, but vetoed by the governor, if I remember. Because of that veto, the chances of that actually going through the process again with success on the other side for this year might be very slim, right? If the governor voted vetoed this last legislative session, chances are the legislature probably won't work to get that through this coming session if they were to request those funds again. Is that correct?
I would say not impossible, and I can provide a little bit of background on that. That was through a program the legislature created called Local Project Funding. And there was proviso language in the budget, and it was in the same line item, the same proviso language that provided, I think it was a $1,000 bonus for first responders, which they had also done last year. But basically, long story short, the proviso language said, "The governor shall submit a budget amendment to the Legislative Budget Commission, which convenes outside of the normal legislative session to release these funds." And they set up, the legislature set up, a process by which members could sponsor local projects. Sort of the same process as we do with our appropriations requests during session. Now, it wasn't strictly speaking a veto. Basically, the governor declined to submit that budget request.
Oh, gotcha.
And so that's why those funds were not released at that time. So it wasn't a veto, but it had sort of the same effect. There was a list of projects that the LBC had approved. The only step that was needed was for the budget amendment to be approved, and that never got done. Hence, those projects didn't get funded. Having said that, I don't think anything would preclude any organization from coming back next session to request, you know, direct line item appropriation.
So that, Commissioner, that didn't go through the normal appropriations review, committee review process? It's kind of a hail mary pass after the fact? That $175 million kind of got, didn't get funded because the governor didn't submit it? So, you know, there's always a good possibility that it's got support, it can move its way through the committee process.
Sounds good. I think at some point, if the Big Ben COC were to have another legislative request for this upcoming session, I could see the board coming at some point, maybe taking a review of that request, and then maybe adding that on to our legislative agenda at a later point, after this workshop, after ratification of the agenda at the next board meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for...
Commissioner Cummings, Dozier, and Vice Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chair, my question was related to the Florida Civil Rights Museum and that particular item here as legislative funding request. But I think my question was pretty much answered based on a question that Commissioner Maddox asked. So I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all. I know we've got a short time today, and there's a lot to cover. So thank you, Dr. Sharkey, for the update, and for all of you for being here. I guess one of the things on my mind, and this is just really a gut check, but you mentioned Hurricane Ian. Of course, we know firsthand up here, when there is a disaster like that, and so much money needs to go into rebuilding, that takes a lot of, you know, investment from the Affordable Housing Funds and others. So I really like what you said about the other programs, you know, the incentives, things like that. So we are more likely to qualify, perhaps, I would guess, for some of those smaller programs and funding in our typical allocation for ship. Would that be? Or I'm just trying to unpack that a little bit. We'll just have to see.
I'll keep it short. My understanding is that, you know, talking to the South-Sodowsky Coalition, what's in the kind of the budget estimate right now for Sodowsky will get fully funded. So you'll get your ship allocation on that pro-rata basis. In addition to that, there may be some additional funds for some innovative projects that may not fit perfectly there. But there are also these tools that I think, you know, there may be some interesting opportunities there.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's going to be very interesting. And since we're working on our inclusionary housing ordinance along with the city, I think it's going to be really important for us to look at that overlap. Ms. County Administrator, I assume I'm on the right track with that, because there may be additional tools that we could reflect on in that ordinance or in other policy changes we might be able to make. As, I mean, there's a lot to unpack here for sure, but I'm only going to ask one more question, Jeff, which is, for workforce training, I know we've got the line item, as usual, with Junior Apprentice and Leon Works. Office of Economic Vitality, under our new leadership with Keith Bowers. I'm very glad that they're looking, continue to look at more grant funding and work more closely with DEO and others. Is there anything else that we could be looking at? And I know I ask you this question every single year. You're smiling, right? I do. But I think with added interest from OEV and looking for that grant funding, and I'm going to ask this on the federal side as well, but on the state end, is there anything else that we could be looking at this year, or we should be?
We, you know, we pass that, you know, almost every year. And we work the governor's office. It's such a small amount of money, and it fits perfectly. I think what we'll do this year, Taylor and I have talked about it, is go to the Commission of Education, who we know very well, many ideas, under whom this apprenticeship stuff really works, and get him to support it, because past, it's been a little challenging. So, I went to it last year. It's fabulous. I was blown away.
Yes, yeah. You're right. It's great. And I'm glad you brought up the Department of Ed as well, because I've taught to folks over there. And that transition on the apprenticeship program from educational institutions and connecting with businesses, I mean, that could be an interesting area to access. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Couple of things. One, we've had a few conversations about Lake Monson over the past few months. Wondering if there's something we'll have discussion about making a legislative priority. The second thing is the Lake Hall School, which we talked about. That's a long way off of funding there. Maybe something more here that we talk about. Wanted to see two there, that know we're right now in a lease situation. That's something we also want to raise to a legislative priority, to see if the state would be willing to get involved in helping us fund either of both of those projects. I throw that out, Jeff, to see if there's any possibilities there. So we, I mean, you understand our situation with Lake Monson cleaning up and stuff like that. And then Lake Hall trying to get the school and the site built out and saved and all that kind of stuff. Do you think there's any possibility there that we would make any traction if we made it a legislative priority?
I think we should. You know, if we don't ask, we don't, we can't tell. I think, Lake Monson in particular, and I don't know, Andy, if that fits into the DEP grant profile. I mean, they're looking at, you know, water quality, water improvement, you know, water safety issues. There's a bunch of money they funded last year for that, some of these grants. Certainly something, you know, we should explore, for sure.
So, I mean, if the board, I mean, I know I can't unilaterally do anything up here, but I think it's a good discussion for us to have, looking at adding Lake Monson as well as Lake Hall to our priorities to see if we can get any help funding there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you all, Jeff and Sharkey, your team, what you've presented, Commissioners, what you've inquired about. When we move now, Ms. Johnson, to our federal lobbyists. And in the interest of good manners, hospitality, and decency, in weighing the balance of what our next workshop is, we have 15 minutes. And I wish for you all to not come here for a 15-minute presentation of 800 miles. So as chairperson, I will borrow from the time of our next workshop. And I believe, as I've looked at it, its weightedness is not as great as the conversation that you might have with us. So, and if you would introduce our lobbying team.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners Vicki Graham, Sarah Vilms. I'll just hand it directly over to them in the interest of time.
Thank you all. Thank you all, Commissioners, County Administrator, and County Attorney. We're thrilled to be back here in Leon County after two-plus years of COVID. As you probably know, I'm Sarah Vilms. I'm here with my esteemed colleague, Vicki Graham. We are down from the Squire Patton Boggs Washington, D.C. office, where we represent Leon County before the federal government. That includes the White House, the federal agencies, and Congress. I'm just going to give you a brief overview, and then we're happy to take any questions. I'm going to give a brief overview of the fiscal year '23 appropriations process. That is, as you know, the federal budget. This funding provide, it's 12 bills that provide funding for, funding streams of everything that Leon County cares about. Healthcare, agriculture, recreation, education, social security, across the gamut. And we advocate for, across those funding streams for Leon County, including affordable housing, and water, and energy, et cetera. In particular, this year, we have included advocacy for a specific $1.6 million for the Veterans Memorial Bridge. As you probably know, this is a bridge replacement project. It's also known as a congressionally-directed spending project. We brought this to the attention of both of the congressmen that represent Leon County. Congressman Lawson chose to champion this funding for the county. With regard to timing of the passage of the appropriations bills, including this $1.6 million for the Veterans Memorial Bridge, we expect, so right now, Congress is running under a continuing resolution, also known as a CR, and that is until December 16. Normally, they would have had to finish all of the bills by September 30, the end of the fiscal year, but they gave themselves a small extension. They will pick up these bills after the election, after November 8. And it's likely, regardless of the election outcomes, we think that there will be a big push to get these bills done by the end of the year. If the House and Senate lose their majorities, there still will be a push during the current Congress to get these bills done by the end of the year, because they want to retain their priorities that they have in these bills. If the House and Senate maintain their majorities, the same thing. They want to push and get these bills done by the end of the year so that it clears their plate for next year, which will begin, you know, in January, and they'll be working on the FY '24 appropriations bills. So we expect these bills to be finished by December 31, or a little bit before. And we're hopeful we can report back what funding amounts are in those bills that will benefit Leon County and its citizens, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I want to thank you, Sarah, very much for, and when I met with you and Vicki in September, to emphasize the priorities that our board had set for our federal agenda. That since COVID, there's been a wider slippage, if you will, of the feminization of poverty, or the povertization of females. And central to an understanding of that, I've invited Dr. Robinson from the Bond Community Health Center, which is a federally qualified health center. And I spoke of her to you all, and the women and children's health thing. And since COVID, it done got worse, as grandmother taught, it's gotten much worse. Dr. Robinson, if you would please come to share with our federal lobbyists some of the intricacies of children, either one, just sit down here if you want to. Okay, Dr. Robinson.
I didn't mask up. Is this okay?
Sure.
Please excuse my voice. I mean, it's really a cold, and I've made somebody rich doing home COVID tests, but I'm still negative. Good afternoon, and thank you for inviting. I know you hear us talk about Leon County and especially the 32304 zip code. You know, and that zip code is only about 16 square miles, but it carries some weighty problems, and some weighty health issues, and health disparities, and so forth. Since COVID, you know, we've even seen the overall death rate and the age of death, the mortality, drop, where people now are dying. The expected lifespan is about 65 years old, as compared to the rest of the state, that's up in the 70s. At Bond, we have about 25% to 30% of our patients live in this area. And we care for about 4,000 women of childbearing age. Unfortunately, since COVID, overall, we've seen numbers such as low birth weights go up. That's not what you want to see. Entry into prenatal care, early entry go down, and some of this is due to access to care. A lot of this is due to education. A lot of this is due to simple poverty, and can't get there, can't do that. You've got competing priorities. That 32304 zip code had the highest number of deaths due to COVID during this period. Excuse me. And all of those trickle-down things. And so people say, "Well, Doc, what are you going to do about this?" Someone called me, you know, when there was the big Supreme Court decision that I can't discuss. And I said, "Well, what we need to do is we have to get back to basics. We have to get women and families and children in and start talking about healthy sexual health education, sexual health practices. Our call for mental health services, especially during COVID, went through the roof. The call for case management services to help women make good decisions about selecting partners..." and keeping partners and how do you deal with conflict when you're poor and you really don't have anywhere else to go but where you're living. So we're talking about, we're here talking about funding. So we're talking about funding for comprehensive services. We know that workforce is horrible. You can't find help. So how do we be creative? I heard you were talking about apprenticeship programs. So how do we be creative in apprenticeship programs to even help the women that are living in these areas? They may not even realize their potential. Can we bring women into apprenticeship programs so that we can grow them into the healthcare field even? So we have workforce issues. We have access issues. We have educational issues. All of these things you can't bill for. I can't bill insurance for case management and so forth and so on. So these are the intangible things that really would weave a great thread through if we were able to look at what the needs are and not just throw money at it, but really build a structure of comprehensive women and children's care. You know, some of the other numbers, we could do statistics all day. But the maternal death rate in this area and in Leon County and in the United States is horrible. Women dying associated with childbirth within that first year. And I can go on and on and on, but I'm glad that we're giving some attention to this. And when we have more time and I am able to really expound on it, I'd like to sit with you and really draw some hard pictures of what's going on in this area. Commissioner Proctor, I hope I've laid a fair picture out to support your ask. And I'll take any questions.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Members, when I was visiting with Sarah and Vicki, I indicated the role of the Bond Community Health Center and how they initially were the testing authority at FAMU's Bragg Stadium Site. And how they've been down in the trenches during COVID. And I got my shots through Bond. And there's just some things that have not been reported or stated in terms of the the things that she talked about. And I don't, didn't know all the words to tell y'all. That's why I wanted her to talk about those stuff. Other questions or any comments to and with our federal lobbying team? They did mention whether or not there would be retention of the two houses. And that as of November the 9th, we will know a lot about the posture of our legislative ask. Maybe we should have had this to Wednesday following November 8. And we could have been a lot more certain maybe about some of these outcomes. But we're thankful for the continuing representation that Squire Patton Boggs has provided over the years. And Dr. Robinson, you remember some years ago, the county, we teamed up with you all. And we went to Syracuse, Memphis, Washington to look at women and children's health.
It was quite a trip. Yes, it was. And I say that in every definition of the word. It was quite a trip. But it was very important to see the various models that are there. You know, one of our dreams at Bond, because healthcare is usually top-heavy with women in the workforce. So where do these women's children go when they're at work? So we saw models where you had a community health center, you had the daycare for staff right in the community health center. You had access to women's health services, mammography, all of this under one roof. When you think about what the preventive healthcare needs were and all of those screenings that were missed during COVID and so forth. So we saw great models. We saw some faith-based, private blended models. Remember, we were in Memphis, Commissioner, and we were at the faith-based center there. But they were also partnered with the medical school. So you know, you have to think outside of the box and say, one, what do you need? And you don't have to give it a name. You just fill in the gaps of what you need to mold whatever the structure is. And the needs are so great here. And in our area, we work so well together here, the various chambers and so forth, that some of these health problems and some of these violence problems and education problems, I think, could be solved just by some more teamwork.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. We had a study, I believe that group was Murphy out of Houston, did a study here. And we were looking at the health needs events before we put a sales tax before the voters on whether or not we wanted to open up support, was it children or something else? Anyway, we were looking at adult health. And what the results showed was, and it was eye-opening because we discovered it was children and young people and mothers. It just blew everybody's mind. That's how we came to support the establishment of women and children's health at Bond, though we have not kept pace with the need. But it was a study that, and when you all had dentistry there, it went money, the demand, amazing. So I just wanted you all to hear that, what is a federally qualified health center and their needs and so forth. Commissioner Welch and other commissioners in queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thank you, Dr. Robinson, my dear friend, for being here. You really, you are such a fountain of knowledge about this stuff. And I think it's awesome for our federal team to hear you and sort of take your guidance and advice. And I think that's awesome, Mr. Chairman, that you thought to bring Dr. Robinson in. My question for Sarah and Vicki is, I don't have anything for you, Dr. Robinson. Thank you, though. You guys alluded to this, and just real quickly, the November 9th, although it may provide clarity, the new Congress will not seat until January, right? So you can expect, I would think, a flurry of activity legislatively, potentially between November and January, if specifically if the minorities or the majorities are lost, right?
That's correct, Commissioner Welch. We expect actually a flurry of activity regardless of the elections, regardless of the outcomes. There's too much that Congress has got on its plate that needs to get done before December 31st. They have to pass the fiscal year '23 appropriations, which is funding all of the federal government and many of the state and local programs that Leon County benefits from. They have to pass the NDAA, which is the National Defense Reauthorization Act, basically, which also funds our national defense. And there is a significant permitting bill you may have heard about that is being, trying to be attached to either that or the FY '23 appropriations bills, which would help with energy in this country, getting more renewable energy, as well as some fossil fuel help, you know, because we've got rising energy prices, et cetera. There will be, there's a plethora of other items, too, that they're going to need to pass before the end of this year. And that, we believe there's going to be a push, you know, these current majorities, the House and Senate, will stay in place until the new Congress is sworn in in early January. So there's going to be a push to get all of these bills done before December 31st, regardless of the outcomes. Vicki, did you want to add?
If I can just add. If I can just add as well, and thank you, Dr. Robinson, for being here. There is also mental health legislation that's going to be picked up again. It's been moving its way through Congress, but it wasn't completed and will likely be picked up. And I think the chances are fairly good that that may be passed in the lame duck session. So to some of her concerns, there may be some additional funding and programming that way. And one other thing is the Safe Banking Act is, has been attached to the National Defense Authorization Bill. And that is the banking for legitimate, the ability to bank for legitimate cannabis businesses. So that may also be passed as part of the end-of-year flurry of activity.
Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank legislative staff, state and federal, for being here, expounding on the various issues and those that will come before the various governing bodies in 2023. I also want to thank Dr. Robinson for being here, giving us some of those startling statistics. We certainly appreciate the Bond Community Health Center. You've been a staple in the community and but for you and your staff. We know a lot of, a medical, medical attention would, to one of, to the most vulnerable in our community would not, would not be addressed. But it's startling in its reality when she explains to us that the highest death rate in this area during the COVID pandemic occurred in the 32304 zip code. We've got high death rates associated with childbirth in the 32304 zip code. And it just goes on and on, Mr. Chair. And if I may, Mr. Chair, if I may ask, Dr. Robinson, and I know the county is very, you know, we are supportive of Bond. We are supportive of, supportive of, supportive of trying to have the best healthcare available to our citizens, notwithstanding the state's refusal to join the Medicaid expansion program. But from a utopian standpoint and from the standpoint of you working every day and seeing the dismal, non-dismal statistics for people in that area, is there something you would recommend that we do proactively at this point that we're not doing?
Well, I like what I'm seeing today. We've got some federal people here that will hopefully shake the bushes for us. We've got some state people, and I think your ask is going to be harder than the feds. But I think proactively, the first thing, you know, I have done the research that I need for my little needs assessment. But I think we really need to truly broadcast, not just for the sake of gloom and doom, but broadcast the statistics and the stories across this area so that people can really see. And we talk about 32304 because the numbers are either the highest or the lowest. But I would tell you, Leon County in general, we don't have a whole lot to brag about when we start talking about healthcare and access to healthcare and healthcare outcomes for uninsured people or underinsured people across the county. And those numbers really need to be, to be looked at, you know. Most of us in this room, we're very fortunate. We have health insurance. We have decent dental insurance. We can, if we can find a psychiatrist, the workforce problem there is psychiatry. We can get to a psychiatrist if need to. But those people that are between insurance or one day they're on Medicaid and one day they're off and one day they can afford the premiums for the Affordable Care Act and the next day they're off, or they fall into that no man's land. They're above 100% of the federal poverty guideline. They're between 100 and 200. And most of the programs are for people from 100 and below or between 100 and 150. And they're, I mean, working as hard as they can and they can't get anything because they're just in that gray zone that they can't get anything. And I think we really need to drill down on those numbers and on those citizens and say, what can we do to plug that hole? I mean, you're talking about, we talk about the middle class, but they are the middle of the middle of the low-middle working class and they can't catch a break, period. You know, it's like being an adolescent child. Your mama tell you, well, you, you old enough, you supposed to know better. And then you want to do something else. And they say, no, you're not old enough. And they're just stuck in that, you know. And I really feel bad. So I think we really need to look at those numbers again, put them out there, tell the stories, not for the sake of drama, but to say, now that we can see it, call it what it is. Now, who has the authority, the money, the wherewithal to do something about it? That's, we start with the data. We start with the information.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Can I just do, make one follow-up?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm not sure if it would be County Administrator, Dr. Robinson. But one of the things we've done this last couple of years in Leon County, we looked at the plight of our children. There was a study. We created the Children's Services Council. And then beyond that, the Sheriff Chronicle has studied the anatomy of a homicide.
Right.
We've got the statistics and pinpointed the areas that we need to address. And from that, we have the status of boards and men and it is growing. And we have factions in the community that are supporting that idea and creating academies and what have you to make sure we address those deficiencies as it relates to our young men. And I'm just wondering if, and maybe we've tackled this before and I'm not sure, but if we had something similar, where we had the statistics and, you know, we had individuals that recognized those statistics like Dr. Robinson has mentioned. And then from that, we could take some concerted action and hopefully we could see the needle, the needle moving in the right, right direction. And I'm not sure, Mr. Chair, if that's something that could come from this board is, you know, to start the foundation for something like that. But I have a problem with us sitting by with the perception that perhaps we're not doing anything. And I know, Mr. County Administrator, we do support the Bond Community Health Center as well as neighborhood. But, you know, we need to do more.
Well, you know, I spoke with one of the school principals and she was telling me that one out of three children in the Title III schools, and if I'm misquoting, I'm not going to be off by much, had either a parent or a custodial adult to die from COVID, right? So let's say that I'm wrong. Let's say it's one in five. But I think she said one in three. Can you imagine the support and the mental health needs and the counseling needs and so forth that we're going to need long-term in this community? And so the hospitals, the Appalachia Capital Region T M H, you know, they're doing, they're adding to their behavioral health services and so forth. Again, the problem is there aren't so many behavioral health providers around, whether they're counselors and so forth. But there's a lot of, there's a general word we call frustration. There's just a lot of hurt and pain and frustration and trauma going on in families across the board. And then you add, you put poverty on top of that, you've got a mess. And I would say, though, when we start looking at the data, you've got to work fast because your data becomes stale before you can get it on the paper. By the time you get it on the paper, it's two years ago or it's some look-back something. So you got to get fresh data, hot data, and then move quickly on it.
Could I offer the suggestion, Commissioner Cummings, that unless there's objection, and hopefully there's, we won't have rejection, to our retreat, making a health element that certainly looks at Bond and neighborhood as a nucleus of our funding or placing new opportunities to support the needs that Dr. Robinson is aware, she identifies and knows about, that maybe we don't. But can we take a deep dive and create an item that looks at community health for our retreat? And we can follow up and possibly gain, now that you've heard our, the nature of our concerns, can do a more formidable job at a, if there's no objection, I'd like to just pass to our County Administrator our interest in our retreat for health item. Very good. Are there other commissioners? Are there other commissioners? Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very brief. Dr. Robinson, thank you very much. It's good to see you as always.
Thank you.
And thank you for, for spending some time with us on a very important issue. Really appreciate it. My work at the, at the food bank, you know, has very similar stories about the, the same demographic, the same people that you're serving, the folks that we were serving at Second Harvest. So I know, I know very much what, about what you speak, so thank you. I had a meeting with, with Vicki and Sarah earlier today and went over a few different things which I thought, which I thought were terrific, really good meeting regarding the, the restoration of passenger rail, for example. There's been a lot of discussion over that over the last few years. The Service Transportation Board is going to determine what type of interaction between, you know, the CSX and Amtrak might exist on, on rail, right? You know, is it, is it twice daily, one daily, that type of thing? And my understanding is that after that determination is made, that's the next step to get to where we might be able to have some discussion about restoration in Florida. So a lot of steps to go through, but that's the next, that's the next step, right? Also talked about how the IRA, the Inflation Reduction Act has a 10-year extension on tax credits for solar and, and other types of energy improvements, right? But the thing about this, and Andy, you probably know about this, but something that's different than what has been adopted in the past is that actually public organizations now have the ability to get that tax credit, actually the amount of the tax credit given to us as a straight cash reimbursement. So it might be a good opportunity for Leon County, if we, you know, for our infrastructure, for our buildings, to think about installing solar panels right now because of that legislation that is now passed. I, I think Andy probably is well aware of that, but now's the time. If we want to take a look at that, now is really the time to figure about, figure out about, you know, adding solar panels to our existing buildings and then getting that, that money from the federal government through the IRA. And then finally, one, one important thing to note, we also talked about, Vicki and Sarah and I talked, and Jody talked about septic to sewer and how the USDA has a program, under certain conditions, if we can have a designation of a zone of a rural area, 10,000 people or less, we might then be eligible for additional federal dollars for septic to sewer. And so that's one thing I was really interested in, in having Vicki and, Vicki and Sarah pointed that out, and I thought that might merit some more discussion here at some point. Even, for example, the Lake Protection Zone around Lake Jackson, you know, that's already a designated zone that might qualify perhaps for some federal funding if we decided to go that route. So just another thing I wanted to explore with, with Vicki and Sarah over the coming year. Thanks very much for your time. Really appreciate you all, appreciate you coming to Tallahassee and spending some time with us today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is far too much to unpack. We know this in the short time allotted. And Dr. Robinson, I appreciate you being here today. That could be a multi-hour workshop in itself. I'm glad the chair mentioned the retreat. There was a number of issues that I highlighted in the, in the report, and I guess I'm going to start, Ms. County Administrator, with we have a new grants coordinator. Not sure if we're, we're there yet, but we have one budgeted for this year, correct? So in my conversation with Vicki and Sarah yesterday, and thank you for your time, my understanding is some of these programs, I mean, we know some funding is going to go direct to the state, and that's, that's going to be a whole different thing to work on. And I'll look over to Jeff and your folks on that. But if it is grant funding, as we see the rulemaking come out for these different programs, are we going to be looking at the, the full scope of this? Because they cover so many different issues we're working on and some that frankly, we've not had the funding to look at yet, that some things may be new. And I guess I'm leading to, do you need board direction to look at that, those new areas? Or if it's in the report, we're going to have the flexibility to look at all of these areas?
Yes, we're, we're going to have the flexibility to look at those, and we'll be sure to come back to the board if we need further direction.
I assume because they align with board goals on sustainability, on neighborhood improvement, on whatever that might be, we're going to be able to look at those different things. Okay. So as I went through this list, and I'm actually going to start with women's health, I think there's a lot more to unpack there just about coordination locally, a lot of different things. But I did note there was a section on violence against women, and we have supportive funding for the, for human trafficking education, our new organization, and also transitional housing assistance. I've been contacted several times this summer with, from women with children who are not finding transitional housing. They, they can't find affordable rent, and this is something that we, you know, we often talk about looking for funding through Continuum of Care and through the homelessness programs. But if there is funding that are coming out of different programs, like, you know, in that category of violence against women, and maybe it overlaps. And tell me if I'm wrong, on the wrong track here, but we have a housing assistance goal, and we need transitional housing so we can broaden that scope to look in these different funding categories. Is that, I see some nods, so we're on the right track. So this might be something that we want to bring up with our partners at Continuum of Care and others, even though they are kind of fall under HUDs per view. They have the data, they, we can coordinate with them and with the city. Reentry also, obviously, sheriffs worked very hard on the RISE program, and I guess I'll look at the County Administrator and Andy, but that, this is something that we, if we identify other funding that could support those efforts, we're working collaboratively on that. Okay. I did mention before Office Economic Vitality, there, there's a, it's not as huge amount of money in the E D A programs, Economic Development Administration, regional innovation grants, as we've seen after some disaster supplementals. But, you know, if there's any programs that could support O E V's work, I think we are on the right track. I mean, we have qualified for our first Economic Development Administration grant at Innovation Park outside of universities or T C C, and O E V was a party to that. So hopefully that gives us a track record, and we can look for other grants that may support some of the workforce training and other goals there. Is that, Vicki, did you have something? You're good, just nodding along. Okay, good. Okay, I'm jumping around here a little bit. Head Start is one, and this could go for you all or County Administrator, Andy, I'm not sure, but do we support efforts for increased funding for Head Start? I heard a presentation from Tim Center just recently on Community Area Action Agency and their work. And Dr. Robinson mentioned, I mean, this is a critical part. So within childcare, we're talking about housing, we're talking about health, but within childcare, is there something the county could do to support those efforts to get additional funding?
I would have to take a look to see exactly what, can we get a little more specific, maybe? I'm not sure if we have any kind of standing policy guidance or anything on that, but if there's a specific project or anything, we can, we can certainly take a look into it.
I think with all of the federal funding, and I'll, I'll get you out of the hot seat, Mr. County Administrator, with all of the federal funding, if we can get more creative and collaborative, if there are facilities, if there are ways to partner with various organizations, I mean, we just left the groundbreaking on Orange Avenue, and Senator Ozil talked about, you know, the desire to have a childcare facility at the Old Westin School. If this is a collaborative approach, is that something, and perhaps Head Start would be a viable option to partner with on that? I'm just looking at the report from Squire Patton Boggs that listed all of these potential allocations, and Head Start was among them.
And I think just to respond to that, no direction needed from us. That comes along with, with what we've got covered and the standing direction that we have from the board.
Okay. Would there need to be any other inquiries from the South City Foundation, from what they're doing or anything else, or is that our commitment to those groups are already locked in?
Absolutely. We will work with them.
Okay. Well, obviously, I mean, there's not just the state funding or state allocation of the federal funding, but there's a tremendous number of programs, and it's a good year to have the grants coordinator, it's a good year to have a lot of eyes on this and a lot more coordination. So the last one I'm going to pick up, and Mr. Chair, this is, I saved this to last intentionally. There's a lot more money for transportation, for bus service, for other things that may be allocated, and access to, I mean, I assume access to jobs, access for different neighborhoods. I, I don't want to belabor this point too much, but this board talked about Amazon bus service, or bus service to Amazon back on September 13th. As County Administrator, at that time, we were waiting for the city to respond with some information. We've heard a lot of discussions since then about, well, sure, we can do this, but the county needs to pay. It is interesting to get that response now, because we've been talking about this for a year and possibly five months, and Amazon is due to open soon. If there is a request from the city that the only way to get this done is for the county to pay, it would be on us to look for federal or state assistance to do that. I am of the mind that the city can probably do that. They're getting federal allocation for 17 additional buses, and it's right on the line with the city limits. So this is, there's more discussion here, but in this legislative discussion, if it does fall back on the county, that is one, I mean, I, I was at Jacob Chapel on, you know, off Lake Bradford today, and Pastor Simmons asked about bus service to Amazon. He's getting those questions from his congregation on Lake Bradford. And how are they going to get to that facility? So I don't think this is something that we can wait on. So, Ms. County Administrator, is that something that we can, and I'm, I'm directing a lot of questions here because this is more policy direction here, but if there is federal or state funding, is that something we could look at?
Absolutely, and, and we will do that, and we'll do that regardless of ultimately who the responsible entity is. We'll look for the money first, and then we'll try to figure out, again, what we can collectively, you know, bring to the table to try to address that.
Well, this is not a regular commission meeting, so I'm not going to make a motion on this part, but I'm going to encourage my colleagues here to take that up very soon, and I hope the city commission will as well, because we need to move forward with bus service to Amazon. That's it. Thank you all very much.
Very good. Commissioner Cummings. Very good. Before I ask the Vice Sheriff for closing words and a motion, I think Commissioner Dozier talked about the word transportation. And since we have a transportation process, we have the Joint Multi-County Transportation Board, but since Hurricane Eon came to Florida, our priorities have been set. But consistent with Secretary Budacek's speeches that I've heard, there's money which don't seem in these pages, outside of these pages. And if that money can come to our states without getting strangulated and held hostage in a governor's office, what money for transportation, or formulas will exist for states or for localities to secure their own funding without sitting there for a governor's office to parcel, may not decide to spend none and sit on it. We have roads that are federally designated highways, such as Highway 319, that is an emergency evacuation route. And we need to take from 363 down to the county line of Walcolor County so that a federally designated highway, which also is an emergency evacuation route, can function. And Eon places and makes that road a priority to me. What would we need to do to include that road, the other emergency twin road, Woodville Highway, as an emergency evacuation route? What would our board need to do to signal to you, in particular with the new Budacek dollars, our desire for, while it's not in our, you know, it would float outside, but we have a federal road, an emergency evacuation road in Florida that, that too lane, it needs to be expanded to meet the expansion of the neighboring county, which is working to expand. Could you direct us on your thoughts?
Sure, I'll, I'll jump in here. Mr. Chairman, I, I know, obviously, following the last board meeting, the, the board approved a motion for the chairman to send a letter over to CRTPA to prioritize that project, to get the construction accelerated, you know, as quickly as possible. I, I can tell you, I know there are discretionary grant programs through U S D O T, RACE program, the Build Program, the Infra Grant Program, you know, very large-scale transportation grants that are available directly to local governments. They're very competitive, and, and as you may recall from recent legislative updates, we are absolutely, you know, in partnership with Blueprint and others, evaluating projects that are a good fit for those specific grant opportunities. My suggestion would be, you know, to continue in, you know, on that particular project, to continue to engage F D O T, our district, CRTPA, to evaluate whether that particular project kind of fits within where it's at, you know, the work program where, where funding is, is currently programmed for in which year, and to take a look and see, you know, kind of based on where we are in that process, whether or not that, that project would be an eligible fit for some of those discretionary grant programs through D O T.
That's not what I was looking for, per se, but we appreciate you sharing that. Commissioner, Vice Sheriff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everybody for coming today. I think this workshop went very well. The questions from commissioners were, were informative and good as well. So I want to go ahead and make a motion for options one and two. I'm going to add that, I'm going to ask that we add to our retreat the health piece that Dr. Robinson brought as a topic of discussion for our retreat in January. And I'm also going to ask that we add Lake Monson as well as Lake Hall to our legislative priorities as well. That'd be my motion.
Hey, we have a motion second here. Further discussion, all in favor of motion offered by Vice Sheriff, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. We want to thank you all again for your sharing. I apologize for the engineer who's a slow conductor, but we kept this train on the track. Thanking you all, safe travels back to Washington. Jeff, we're thanking you all for your steadfast focus on the needs of our community and over there in the jungle, duking it out, and we appreciate that. We want to prepare now for our next workshop dealing with policies.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I apologize to interrupting, but the conversation about grants, this one before I leave, we represent SpaceX, there's a huge $400 million rural broadband infrastructure, internet, satellite internet opportunity, and they want to partner with local communities? So I'll get back to Andy on this, but I think it's a rare opportunity if there are areas in Leon County that don't have, you know, high-speed internet, this is a, this is a satellite-based dish, so.
You were reading the District One Commissioner's mind. I mean, you're sitting up there reading my mind.
I felt that.
Yeah, well, I get that. I appreciate that empathy, and our commission does. We're grateful to you. Again, safe travels. Thank you for this report. We'll prepare now. Take two minutes and we'll prepare for our next. We may have to extend 15 minutes longer than three. We're going to take a two-minute break.
30,000 feet looking down. We're not getting into the nitty gritty of, you know, how far should this house be from that house? Or how many parking spaces are required for that kind of retail use? Instead, it broadly looks at the community and says, what are we trying to achieve? What are our community values? How do we achieve those via the comprehensive plan? And how does that direct the land development code, which is the next document that does get into those specifics? So our land development code, like I said, the comp plan guides the development of the land development code. The land development code is going to contain your zoning districts. So whereas the comprehensive plan may say this area is appropriate for residential development of this type and at this intensity, your zoning districts are then going to get down to the specific details of, these are those type of setbacks you should have from the roadway and from your rear yard neighbor and your side yard neighbors. This is the maximum height a building can go. This is the maximum perhaps footprint of a building and all sorts of other things that go beyond just the zoning, but also go into your site plan, handle things like environmental management, transportation management, and so on. So the two, I brought both items with me today just to, because I feel visually they really laid out for you. This is a comprehensive plan here. You're looking at a document that probably weighs in at about two pounds. And this is a, this is your land development code. Now, this is, this comes from my private sector experience. We used to, when we finished up with a D R I, we used to lift it up and heft it for weight and say, yeah, that feels like the amount we charged for it. So this land development code is 554 pages. And, you know, anytime we have someone from the public say, you know, on that project, you should consider the environment, it's easy to say, it's in there. You know, you should consider, you know, transportation impacts. It's in there. We've covered most everything in the land development code. And the land development code is that, that element that then helps ensure that once the comprehensive plan, in this case, let's say an amendment, is processed, that all those things that we talked about in that comprehensive amendment process are going to happen on the ground. So let's very quickly look at the land development process from start to finish. Wanted to, and we'll take you through a few key phases here. Most everything starts with an idea or concept, right? We have a developer who says, hey, I've, I've got an idea for a use. They're either looking for property to cite that use, or they have a piece of property and they're wondering what's the highest and best use for that property. In some cases, the comprehensive, well, in all cases, the comprehensive plan is going to play a role. Not in every case, obviously, is there going to be a comp plan amendment per se. Ideally, the use that's being proposed is consistent with what the comprehensive plan outlines for that, that specific piece of property. Zoning then follows up the comprehensive plan, getting into more details, we've already discussed, followed by site planning, which you're now segueing from planning into D S M at that point, and then eventually into your actual building permits for construction, environmental, and finally inspection. One of the things that we do exceedingly well here in Leon County, and, you know, prior to me coming to Leon County, I'd worked in the private sector throughout the southeast and actually throughout the country. It was rare for me to find a public sector department that did the level of, of, of concept planning that we do here. And, and we do it for free. It's a service that we provide to ensure that development is of a higher quality than if we just turn that over to, to the private sector to do. So all of you are familiar with DesignWorks. I don't need to go into great detail there. Here are a couple of, of concepts that were drawn up by DesignWorks. To the right, I think, actually, I recognize that one as the Starbucks for, at Bannerman and Bullheadly. And to the left, there is Jason Alman's project on Highway 90.
Camilio.
Camilio, thank you. Yes, sorry. And so you see examples there of both commercial development and residential development done up in a conceptual manner that is consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with our land development code. Therefore, we're handing this over at no cost to the developer to say, you can now move forward in your, in your permitting process with the knowledge that this plan, for all intensive purposes, meets the intent of the comprehensive plan and the line development code. Sorry about that. The second step in the process, so once somebody has a concept planned down and they've made a formal submittal to typically to D S M to say, you know, we'd like to develop this site, is the comprehensive plan. So every, every project is compared to the content, comprehensive plan to determine whether it's consistent with the plan. There's your elements again, all 12 of them. While we mostly focus on whether or not that, that proposed development is consistent with the future land use map, we also look at things like mobility, parks and recreation, housing, capital improvements to determine whether or not there's anything in those elements that might, might say we should do things differently on that particular site. Once we've determined that, that the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan, or let me back up a second, if we determine that a proposal is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, for instance, we have some property that someone would like to develop in a residential nature, but it isn't currently designated residential on the future land use map, there, there's a way to change that, comprehensive plan amendments. And back when the Original Growth Management Act was passed in 1985 here in Florida, they required that every local government develop a, a future land use map. Many just had a zoning map at that point. And they also created this process by which you could amend not just that map, but any other part of the comprehensive plan. You'll hear these terms used a little bit later on the presentation, but small scale map amendments are those that are 50 acres or less in size. Large scale map amendments are those that are 50 acres or greater in size. And text amendments were, well, reference the, the text of the comprehensive plan. We rarely get text amendments from the, from, from, from outside the organization. Mostly when you hear about a text amendment, it's something that we've identified needs changing and staff is bringing that forward to you. Map amendments, for the most part, do come from property owners who say, hey, I, I think I have a higher and better use for this, and I'd like to propose that we change the future land use map to allow for that use to occur. The comprehensive plan amendment process is pretty robust. It is typically a close to a nine month process. Not all of the things you see here before you are, are required by the state. We do, as always, we do extra here in Leon County. It starts with an application period, moves on to notifications to the, to the, the adjoining properties. We do hold a public open house where we share with them at the outset what we've received in that application cycle. That's followed by a local planning agency workshop, which is open to the public, followed by a local planning agency, and this is your planning and zoning group, by the way. They just act as the, the formal title for them when they're amending the comprehensive plan or reviewing comprehensive plan amendments is the local planning agency. That's followed by your joint city county commission workshop, joint transmittal hearings, adoption, public hearings, and then finally, if necessary, and in most cases, when somebody's changing the land use, they also need to change the zoning, which is why you see those two running together so often, the rezoning, public hearings.
Barry, who's eligible to make requests for comprehensive plan amendments?
Anyone is eligible to make that. Sometimes you'll see them come from staff, like I said, but for the most part, any, any property owner, obviously, you have to have control of the property. I can't say, hey, I'd like to change my neighbor's property to something other than what it is today. You have to, we, we require an owner affidavit to show that you do have control of that property, but it, it's open to anybody to make that application.
And with respect to the board of county commissioners, our board would need four of us to make the request for a change to the comp plan. Is that accurate? Process for this board?
Yeah, I believe so. If you, if you wanted to change the comprehensive plan, you could ask for that. That's usually how things get started and then move on to staff for review, and we bring that forward from there. Correct?
Commissioners, once upon a time, each commissioner could solely individually make a request. Our board modified that policy that it now, if we desire to make a request to, a change to the comprehensive plan, we would have to, in solidarity, I don't know if it's five, two, or four, three, but we would have to agree to initiate a comp plan. Thank you.
That's in conjunction with the city. No, this is just the county board.
Right. The city can initiate a comp plan amendment and we can do the thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. The vast majority of these do come from the, from, from the public. So it comes from property owners and things of that sort. As a matter of fact, our comprehensive plan and the, since 1992, when it was originally adopted, has been amended close to 900 times.
Closer to a thousand.
Closer to a thousand times. The vast majority of those have been map amendments. So it's rare that we actually go in and change much of the text that's in there. That's an important thing to keep in mind as we move forward with the comp plan reform effort and, and, and start looking at how we're going to, what the new future land use element, mobility element are going to look like. I've highlighted here for you the things that are required by the state, so you can see the things that we do that are above and beyond. The state process is pretty, pretty stark. It's just, you know, application period, bring it to your, your planning board, have a joint, have a transmittal hearing. We do a joint transmittal hearing, then a public adoption hearing, and then, if required, rezoning. So you can see that we throw in our notification processes is, is beyond what's required by the state. Public open house is beyond what's required. Our workshops are beyond what's required, but we feel like that helps notify the public of what's going on. It helps also through the workshops to educate the, the planning board and, and you as a commission as to what those proposed changes are. So from there, a project that requires a comprehensive plan amendment, a map amendment in particular, typically requires some sort of a zoning change as well. The zoning is sort of your next step down. So whereas the future land use map may dictate that a particular piece of property can be developed in a residential nature at a certain density with a certain type of residential, when you drop down to the zoning phase, now you're getting into what we call our performance standards. So now you get into, this is, you know, this is how much parking you might require for a multifamily residential project. These are the buffers, the setbacks, the infrastructure that's required to accommodate that, such as water, sewer, and any other land development issues that might come up as part of that, that site plan review. Zoning phase locally includes direct mail notices, newspaper advertisements, a planning commission public hearing, and a board public hearing in, in all cases. So again, a plentiful opportunity for folks who want to be involved in that process to be involved in that process. Another point to make is we're, when we jump from that future land use map amendment into the zoning phase, we're, we're leaping from what is a legislative matter, and I'm looking over my attorney's hand, a legislative matter into the quasi judicial realm. So it's, it, it changes the rules of engagement, of course, as, as you move into these phases, these future phases here. Site plan review, this is, this is what we do, is our bread and butter in D S M in our Development Services Division ensures that every plan, every site plan that's submitted to us is consistent with the land development code. We also, we also issue environmental permits. We, starting with a natural features inventory where we go out and we identify everything that's on the site. It's interesting because we'll always have folks, when, when there's a development proposal, come to us and say, you know, there's a, the wetland on that site. You know, there's gopher tortoises on that site. We know. You know, we, one of the first things we do is have them go out and do that natural features inventory, determine what protected features might exist on that site prior to any development occurring on that site. That then informs the environmental management permit, which dictates what portions of the site need to be conserved or preserved, what portions of the site can be impacted, how your stormwater is handled, and anything else having to do with the environmental side of things. It also includes our land development code and our, our review of the site plan. We consider buffering from adjacent uses, typically uses that might have somewhat of a compatibility issue. We determine concurrency for both roads and schools, as well as several other items, although roads and schools are usually the big ones that people ask about. We get into a few of the other district standards, like I said, height and setbacks and things of that sort, and also how this, this subdivision is going to be served by water and wastewater.
Barry, excuse me, tell us what triggers this level of process? Is it the size of the request? A thousand acres, 500 acres, or how much money it is? What, what invokes the necessity for this, these processes you're explaining?
So any, it's, it's usually a submittal to us. It's an application to D S M for development of a site. There are small, and we, we have different types of permitting levels so that we're not holding a single, say you have a single property owner who just wants to take one lot and turn it into two lots. We're not going to make them go through the, the same environmental review process as someone who's building a, you know, a shopping mall or something of that sort. So we have, we, we account for that in our applications and our processes and our fees to ensure that we're being fair and that we're treating larger projects with a little more scrutiny than we are for the smaller projects. And I believe, this may help out too, I believe the next slide gets us into the type of reviews that we do for each one of these. So we've, we've tiered out the type of review processes that we bring things through when they hit that site plan review phase. Type As are typically, you know, you might have a subdivision of less than 10, 10 lots. You might have a very small non-residential use, commercial use, you know, of, let's say 5,000 square feet or so. It's a, it's a streamlined process. It's, we actually called our ASAP process. And it basically gets everything through relatively quickly. It's approved administratively by the, the head of our Development Services Division. And therefore, we, we can, you know, finalize these sort of things in a, in a quick process because again, these are, these are the small ones. Type B is really your bread and butter. Most of your projects that come through are, are a type B, meaning that they, they, they're less than, they're greater than de minimis as you would find with type As. They are reviewed and approved by the Development Review Committee, which is myself, Brent Pell representing Public Works, and typically Russell Snyder representing Planning. They go before, they go through the same application review meeting process, which is open to the public. The D R C meeting is open to the public. And, and what you'll notice here is that the notification ranges are increasing as the project size and intensities are increasing. So with a type A, you're at 600 feet plus all the HOAs and Property Owners Association within one mile. A type B, you've, you've jumped up to 800 feet. Our type Cs are, are, they're typically the things that, the intensity or the uniqueness of the project, these can sometimes be those things that, that are restricted uses in a district that we feel should come before you folks for final disposition. They're finally reviewed, again, they go through the same process of, of the R meeting, D R C, but then finally they come to the board accounting commissioners for final vote. You just did this with the apartment complex at Bannerman and Bullheadly. Because of the number of units included in that apartment complex, it, it jumped up to a type C. Now, if they had asked for fewer units, it may have been a type B. The residential or non-residential component of that same project was a type B because it stayed under the threshold for, for, for a type C. And finally, your type Ds, I'm sorry, type Cs are 1,000 square feet. So again, we're, we're tiering up there. Your type Ds are pretty much your P U Ds and D R Is. So these are, this is just the, very few of these still out there today. Again, they go through pretty much the same process as the, as, as the type Cs, just slightly different.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Barry, just a quick question. If you go back to the last slide.
Sure.
So type B, C, and D are quasi judicial. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, they're, they're moving up into that. And actually, I guess each one of them would be quasi judicial. Yeah, all, all these would be quasi judicial, but only the type Cs and type Ds are going to come to the board accounting commissioners for final disposition.
Type Cs and type Ds?
Correct.
I thought I saw on the agenda item that, that B, C, and D were quasi judicial.
They are. That's correct.
Okay. So that means type B doesn't come to the county commission, but it's quasi judicial in the eyes of the D R C and the R M.
Correct. Yeah. So we're held to the same standards in the D R C. I can't discuss these with Brent. I can't discuss these with Russell, the head of our D R C.
Any ex parte communications you have to record?
Correct. Absolutely. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to be really careful about that because typically we work together very closely on a daily basis, but on these, we have to make sure that we're, you know, we're not discussing anything pertaining to the case except at that D R C.
Understood. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. You know, questions? Okay. Thank you, Barry.
And finally, you know, the, the final step in that process, once the site plan and the E M P have been approved, is to, to move on to permanent construction in the inspection phase. Everything that happens from there on out must adhere to the site plan that's been approved and the E M P that's been approved. For buildings, we then jump to the Florida Building Code, which is of course adopted and amended by the Florida Building Commission. So this is one of those documents that's kind of outside of our, our, our realm of control. And I'd be remiss if I didn't point this out, residential permits, new residential permits, we're turning in an average of seven days now. So we've made some significant headway there, and that is a vast majority of what we're doing in an incorporated portion of the county. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn the presentation over to Artie to cover the notification and public engagement portion of the process for a comprehensive plan amendments in particular.
Thank you, Barry. Commissioners, Barry just walked through the overall development process, and as you saw, it kind of starts off really big. You know, people have ideas and they want to do things and they have property and they want to see that property developed. And then we start kind of narrowing down. It's almost like an inverted pyramid, if you will, kind of big ideas, comp plan, you start getting more and more specific as you get to the zoning stage, then you get really specific when you get to the site plan stage, and then finally you get to like the building and it meeting building code. So it kind of goes from really big to very specific. I'm going to touch on the ways that we engage and inform the community and the, the public as we go through these processes. Leon County has about 35 or a little over 35 different advisory boards or citizens committees. And when it comes to the planning process and the decent process, there's a couple of those that we tend to engage with more regularly. So in planning, when it comes to comprehensive plan, kind of that phase of development, we engage with a local planning agency. And as Barry noted, we do workshops with the local planning agency before doing that formal public hearing where they make a recommendation that goes to the board or for city amendments that go to the city commission. When it comes to rezonings, it's kind of the same thing, but with a planning commission. So planning commission, local planning agency, those are the ones that we engage in on a regular basis. When we have a comp plan amendment or a rezoning that might be a little bit unique or something, we do often reach out to those other citizens committees. Good example of that is we often take comprehensive plan amendments to the Water Resources Committee, especially if there's any sort of water resource on the site or anything that we would benefit from hearing from that committee. We've taken transportation policies to the Joint City County Bicycle Work Group before. So we do leverage the other citizens committees on a regular basis, but, you know, the local planning agency or the, and the planning commission are the ones that have that formal public hearing and make a recommendation that goes to this board when you're considering whether to adopt an amendment or not. For D S M, they have the Advisory Committee on Quality Growth, Science Advisory Committee. So we do engage the citizen boards often and regularly and get a lot of input from industry professionals through that process. So I'd be remiss if I didn't say, you know, these citizen boards do provide a lot of important and meaningful input throughout the, the process. Some of the boards a little bit more relevant than others to the development process, but just in general, it's important to note that. We also use direct mail notices, as Barry mentioned, the, the different radii for the type A, B, C, D site plan reviews. For comprehensive planning and rezoning, all of those are 1,000 feet. And in a moment, I'll, I'll kind of get to a recommendation to expand that for specific amendments in rural parts of the community. So I'll hit on direct mail notices a little bit more in a moment. To reach a broader audience, we continue to publish advertisements in the newspaper. We use email subscriptions to send out email blasts to anyone in the public who's interested in the development process and knowing what's going on in the community. Every year, we set up a page for comprehensive plan amendments. So right now, specifically talking about comp plan amendments. That page includes, you know, the application that we receive in whole, so someone can see what did planning receive in terms of a request for comp plan amendment. That entire application is put online. As soon as we have a staff report, we post that online. We have a mechanism through the website by which people can submit comments directly to us. We actually combine those together and post those online so people can see what other people are commenting on. We have the meeting schedule online, and we also go through in good detail what each step of the process is and what the purpose of that meeting is. So if someone can see on there, oh, there's a public open house on December 7th or whatever day it will be, this is what the purpose of that meeting is. So we really try to make it clear, like how you can be engaged in the process and what each step of the, the process is. You know, broader picture, planning department also has a public engagement page on the website that talks broadly about public engagement, the ways you can be involved in many different aspects of planning and development, and then links to the various agendas and where you can get more information about projects. A little bit more targeted, C M R has been using the Nextdoor app to target specific neighborhoods with information about development projects. And then we do public meetings and public, public open houses, which are a little bit less formal, as well as, and many times with the planning commission, local planning agency, and with the, the board and city commission, formal public hearings. These are the ones where the public can offer testimony, they have the three minutes. And so there's multiple tools we use throughout the development process to engage the public and ensure that they're informed of what is happening. Going back to those direct mail notifications, these are the notifications that we put in an envelope, put stamp on it, and send it to all the property owners within a certain radius of a proposed project. And for, again, for comp plan amendments, rezonings, that's 1,000 feet. I'll note that state requirements do not require any notification of adjacent property owners. If the county were to initiate a rezoning, we would have to notify the property owner of that rezoning, but there's no requirement to notify any adjacent property owners. So right off the bat, we greatly exceed the minimum requirements of the state. So we'll also note that in 2008, it was locally, we expanded our notifications because we can have local requirements that exceed the, the state minimum. We expanded that from 500 feet to 1,000 feet in 2008. And then we also looked at what other communities are doing and found that we exceed most of our peer communities, if not all of our peer communities, in one way or another, which generally range from 350 feet to 500 feet.
At this process. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just at this stage, with the notification portion, primarily just designed to allow the adjacent property owners to know that this pretty much has been approved or that this is coming, because it's, at this stage, it's already been reviewed and approved by, by staff, am I correct?
This actually happens before that. So this would be a stage where we inform the adjacent property owners that a request has been made to change the land use or the zoning of a property. We send out the notifications before we even complete a staff report because we want people to know upfront that there is something that is being considered. We may come with a recommendation of denial, or we may come with a recommendation of approval that has no bearing on how we notify adjacent property owners. We notify them upfront that something has been, been proposed. And those notifications have a map of the site showing kind of where we're talking about, also how to provide input. So the notifications contain a lot of information.
Okay. One follow up, Mr. Chair. So at, at this stage, is this where the adjacent property owners can provide input?
Absolutely.
Okay. But if the application of the applicant has met all the legal requirements and gone through all the proper stages pursuant to the county policies and, and regulations, does any negative input from adjacent property owners make any difference? And I guess my point is, would, is the county pretty much obligated or tied into approving the request if the requestor has met all the, all the requirements, the procedural legal requirements?
That is more the case when it comes to the, the site plan approval and the rezonings that are quasi judicial. Comprehensive plan amendments are legislative, and so there's a little bit more flexibility in terms of that. So it depends on which stage of the development process we're in. But there's also opportunities for the public to bring to light information that we may not have previously known. And so they may reference previous reports, or they may say, hey, we think this is inconsistent with this comp plan policy, and that may trigger kind of an additional look at those things.
Yeah. If I could just add there, the word entitlement comes into play throughout the development process. And the reason that we use that word is.
I'm sorry, what is the word?
Entitlement.
Entitlement.
Entitlement, correct. So when you're dealing with a future land use map amendment, let's say, they're asking for an entitlement from, from the board. So they're saying. So they're saying, will you grant us this entitlement to develop this property in, let's say, a commercial nature? An entitlement that doesn't exist currently, that's why they're before you asking for that. Once those entitlements are in place, you move into that quasi-judicial role or portion of the process where, provided that they can meet the criteria that's laid out in the Land Development Code, they're entitled to use their property in the manner that the entitlement grants them. So that's where it switches gears, and I understand what you're saying there. And you're right, when Artie's out there noticing for comp plan amendments, the input from the public plays a different role than when my group is out there notifying for, let's say, a site plan approval or something of that sort.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Carry on.
All right. Here's a kind of a peer review we did. It looks like-- Oh, no, it shows up on the screen up there. As you'll see, Leon County goes well above what's required by the state, which isn't very much, to be honest. We go significantly above our peer communities as well. In fact, for the majority of them, we're at least double the notification area for most communities, and even more so for some like Duval County and Jacksonville, who have a 350-foot radius, Gainesville, the city of Gainesville, a 400-foot radius. And then in many other places, it's 500. 500 is kind of a standard that you see throughout the state, even beyond these peer communities. There are a few communities that go more than 500 feet. Us, city of Tallahassee, and then Collier County does, specifically in rural areas. So as you'll see on here, Collier County does a split where if you're in urban area, it's 500 feet. If you're a rural area, it's 1,000 feet. And then Alachua County does the same thing, not the city of Gainesville, but the county. Unlike Tallahassee and Leon County, they don't have a joint comprehensive plan, so they handle their processes separately. But Alachua County, in rural areas, goes a quarter mile, so 1,320 feet, a quarter mile. So they do the same thing that Collier County does, where they have a split between, in the urban area, they do a shorter radius; in the rural areas, they do a much wider radius. And then one other interesting one to note is Polk County. So they have a 500-foot radius, but if they don't hit at least 12 property owners, they expand until they hit 12 property owners. So they have a 12-property owner minimum. Based on this analysis, we will have a recommendation to expand the notification area. But before we get into that, there are some legal considerations that are really important to note. Notice requirements have legal implications largely related to the issue of who has legal standing to challenge a board decision or due process concern. The general test for standing is, does the person have, or would they suffer a special kind of injury that's different in kind than the overall community? So not necessarily different in degree, but different in kind when you're looking at whether you can challenge a development order. That's a rezoning, site plan, development plan.
Are those challenges leveled through the county commission or the county court?
They actually elevate above-- refer to the attorney.
That's when someone challenges a final decision of this body, the planning commission, the DRC, in court.
And standing is determined on a case-by-case basis, but in determining whether a person has that legal standing, the courts will consider, or at least they have the opportunity to consider, whether the person is an abutting property owner, so if they're adjacent to the proposed development site, or if they were entitled to a notice. So by sending out a notice, there is the potential for an implication that someone would have standing, whether there's a harm or not. It's a little different if someone is challenging based on the consistency of a comp plan. So if we're looking at development order, is this consistent with the comprehensive plan? That test is a little bit broader. So it's not necessarily, do you have a different kind of injury, but do you have a greater degree as well? And so there's that. But in all these cases, it's important to note that as we expand the notification area, there is the potential that we are implying that people could have a different kind or greater degree of injury than the general public. So those are some legal considerations, and I'm sure the county attorney could explain that a little bit more in detail than I could. And so if there's questions, I may defer to the county attorney's office. But the big picture of what I'm trying to say is, expanding the notification radius could result in more challenges, challengers benefiting from the presumption of standing, whether there's an actual harm or not. The next slide is the recommendation, and I think that's what we've been waiting for. So there we go. So when we looked at our local processes, we found that we significantly exceed what's required by the state. Again, that's not a great effort to exceed that, but it should be noted that we significantly exceed what's required by the state. We also exceed what our peer communities do. For the most part, they range from 350 to 500 feet. We're at 1,000 feet for comp plan amendments, rezonings, as well as the type C and D site plan review. So we greatly exceed what our peer communities are doing. But in looking at what some of the other communities do, there were a couple of things I pointed out with Alachua County and Collier County and Polk County that are different, innovative, probably a good practice to follow, because you do want to make sure you do things like hit a minimum threshold of people. And so we are recommending that for large-scale comprehensive plan amendments in rural parts of unincorporated Leon County, that we expand the notification radius from 1,000 feet to 1,500 feet. This would be even further than what Alachua County does, but it would follow that same model that Alachua County and Collier County do, where you have a different notification radius in urban areas, which we would propose that you keep that at 1,000 feet, so still double what most of our peer communities do. But in the rural areas, that we would expand that even more. And then like Polk County, I think they said there's a 12 or 18, I'd have to jump back to the slide. We're proposing that we would have a minimum threshold of 30 people. So if we started sending notices out, you didn't hit 30 people, we would just keep expanding until we at least hit that threshold. We can always go more, but we would want to at least hit that minimum threshold of 30 people. But because of those legal considerations I mentioned a moment ago, we recommend that that only apply to those comprehensive plan amendments and not to quasi-judicial hearings because of the implications in terms of legal standing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure I'm following this correctly. So what you're proposing would apply to the comp plan amendments, but as well as type A. Is that correct for site plan requests?
Type As are also quasi-judicial. So--
Are they?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, B, C, and D.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
May I?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I do believe that all of them are quasi-judicial. It's just the type B, C, and D, or C and D require-- Those are the ones that come to us. But A and B are also quasi-judicial, right?
We were not recommending including the type A, just because those are really small and expanding the notification for something that's pretty much small, meets all the criteria, really would not necessarily be beneficial to anyone.
I don't think type A is quasi-judicial, because you all work together on type A without having to be under the quasi-judicial standards.
Well, there's no public hearing for a type A.
Yeah.
That's the difference between a type A and a type B, which don't come before this body, but a type B does require a hearing and therefore is quasi-judicial, just like a C or a D. So the basis for approval of a type A, I mean, it has to meet all of the requirements. It has to be consistent with the comp plan, has to be consistent with the Land Development Code and all of that stuff, but the process itself is actually much more streamlined. So you don't really end up with a formal quasi-judicial proceeding context because of the expedited and more minimal approval process for a type A. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I believe it does. So because you have no public hearings, you don't have to record ex parte communications and have them published for a public hearing because there's no public hearing?
Correct. But it doesn't make it legislative in nature like a comprehensive plan would, so it is a bit of a gray area there.
Thanks. That helps clarify it quite a bit. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just real quick. We're talking about 1,500 feet of notification from the periphery of that land, so in all directions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that's the notification of property owners, as well as any homeowners association or neighborhood association that falls within that too, which we do that so that they can then notify the rest of the neighborhood as well.
Commissioners, on page 14, staff has informed us that the type B, C, and D site plan approval process is a quasi-judicial decision, meaning it is localizing its application in blah, blah, blah. The type A site plan is approved administratively, meaning staff objectively applies the standards in the LDC. So from my reliance on what is presented to us, the B, C, D are quasi--
I was looking at that page when I asked the question, because apparently type A is quasi-judicial but not under the same stringent standards of having to record ex parte communications because there's no public hearing. So since there's no public hearing, they don't need to present those ex parte communications to a public hearing? Is that correct, Madam Attorney?
Yes, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. So what Commissioner Minor is focusing on is that additional heightened process that this commission and that other body for type B has to comply with because of the potential for due process violations and the risk, well, the presumption of, I guess, legality or illegality if one of the parties or an interested party has an ex parte communication with one of the decision makers during that process. And why there's the extra disclosure for type B, C, and D, because it's in the context of that public hearing. Yes, that's what your--
All right, thank you.
That's clear as mud, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right, guys, continue.
So this table provides an example of what that would mean in terms of notifications based on a couple of recent large-scale map amendments that were in the county involving rural lands. So you can see that in some instances, that expansion would result in about 30 more, but compared to the 39, it's almost doubling the number of notifications. And then for other ones like the Southwood plantation, when you actually see an increase of about 114, so about a quarter more notifications. And so just wanted to show what that would have meant in terms of some of the amendments that have previously gone through the amendment process. And so landing on this, if you agree with the proposal to expand the notification area, that is option two. And so the staff recommendations for the workshop are option one and two.
Okay. Chairman recognizes Commissioner Dozier. If she desires to make the final motion, a workshop in her-- For his account of Commissioner, I'd definitely defer to that. Before she makes that motion, are there any comments or continuous consideration, Commissioner Minor?
More questions, Mr. Chairman. Thanks so much. I appreciate it. Just to-- Artie, you talked about the inverted pyramid. And as the process goes along, you get more and more specific. Are there cases where-- This is really a question to help me understand the process a little bit more. Let's say you go through to the site plan, and as you get more specific, let's say with the natural features inventory, you realize now that you've done the natural features inventory that there are actually inconsistencies with the comp plan land use element or the conservation element. And does that happen often where as you get more specific, you actually realize compliance with the comp plan wasn't there?
I'm happy to fill in there, Commissioner. We've not seen that happen, because what will happen at that point in the process is they'll realize that they maybe need to dial back their development program a little bit. So in other words, in the conservation element, you'll see references to conservation and preservation features like floodplain and wetland and things like that. Obviously, that would be identified in the NFI. Then the EMP would say you need to stay out of these areas and put them in a perpetual easement. And if that means they get a few less homes or a few less parking spaces, so be it that's the case. But there's not a method by which they're going to then go back through the process and say, well, I want to amend the comprehensive plan to get me back those few units. But that's why it's so critical at the forefront of the process that we have design works involved and that someone's sitting down and giving them a true yield. There's a difference between a development program and a development plan. So a development program is, I'd like to build an apartment complex of 250 units. The development plan actually shows how those 250 units and all the required parking spaces and setbacks and buffers and so on would actually fit on a specific site. And when you do that really early on in the process, it kind of helps avoid any of those potential issues later on.
Sounds good. Okay, that helps a lot. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Other Commissioners, Commissioner Dozier. I just want to say, Commissioners, what I've always found interesting and curious is that the private development rights of property owners, if I could use this word, are superior to the barking and yowthing and blah, blah, blah of citizens. We got notification all along the way. But at the end of the day, a person who has development rights, certain zoning, and done everything by the book, General Counsel, am I accurate in noticing that notification in all the citizens, existing neighbors, they get their voice to say something into the process, but their voice does not carry more weight than the person who owns that property and is trying to develop it consistent with the codes of the state of Florida and the codes of the city of Tallahassee and Leon County? Is that accurate?
Once you hit a quasi-judicial process, so once you've established your policy through your comprehensive plan, and you've said certain uses are permitted in certain areas, and you have a landowner, and they go through all of the-- They check all the boxes, they go through the entire process, and there's a determination that their intended use of their property is consistent with the comp plan and the Land Development Code, then neighbors not liking what they want to do with their property does not constitute competent substantial evidence, which is the standard, the legal standard, for the board to approve or deny a request in a quasi-judicial proceeding. So once it becomes quasi-judicial, you are right, Chair. This board is very limited in its ability to deny an application that meets all of the criteria and all the legal standards.
Thank you. And see, that is the political rub. And as I looked at a conversation in today's newspaper from District Five contenders to succeed Commissioner Dozier, this commission is often made to look like we're siding with the developers. We're siding with the developers. That ain't true. The law has sided with the developers, and there's zero we can do to stymie the interest of developers to develop their property consistent with the law. So thank you very much, General Counsel. And that explains that we're not a pro-development or anti-development. We let people do what the law allowed them to do. And anything that differs from that, to the extent of that difference, is just plain wrong and is not well-informed. So we have, as a board, as a body, we've not attacked or tried to subvert the property development rights of owners of dirt. We've just not done that. And I think that as we go forward in the future, one of the stickier points to me has been the grandfathering of, say, like when we were in Woodville the other night, and people have been out there since the Book of Isaiah was invented, and they come to us, and we have new regulations, and there's new requirements, and they say, well, this ain't how it was. And when we came here, it was like this, this, this. We say, yeah, but there's new regs. And that's always the stickier point to me with these codes, with this, is that those folk who have existed and they want to do the things that once upon a time they could do, somehow we've put the claw down. do, somehow we've put the claw down on them and they feel that we're stopping them, but the bigs, if you will, get to do what they want and we're siding with them. So these are thoughts, I think, well worthy of us continuing to fathom and to note the idiosyncrasies that each, from the bigs developing to the small person developing and how our rules operate. Commissioner Cummins and Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real brief, an extension of your questioning with staff and with the county attorney, I'd just like to ask, in many instances, we have citizens that come before us in those quasi judicial settings, and if there's a situation where the developers have met all the criteria but we've got this outpouring of citizens that is against the recommended change, and if we as the governing body side with the citizens, does that leave the county vulnerable for litigation and increased costs and, you know, lawsuit?
Mr. Chair?
May I answer that question?
Yes, Madam Attorney.
The answer is yes to that. Again, if an applicant wanted to develop property and the board wanted to deny it, competent substantial evidence again is not the neighbors don't like it. That alone is not competent substantial evidence. Now, there may be something else. There may be something we point to where arguably something is not consistent with the comprehensive plan or with something else, but there has to be competent substantial evidence to support whatever decision the board makes. For example, there was a request a year, year and a half ago, time flies, to rezone a piece of property in Southwood. There was a lot of community objection to that. The board ultimately denied it, but it did so on other bases. It did not rely on the fact that the neighbors did not want it and didn't like it. And that was challenged, but ultimately, the county prevailed in defending the board's decision because we had competent substantial evidence to deny it. So that's the difference.
Thank you.
To your point, and I'm walking on thinner ice, as a matter of due process, if we find deficits in the application, we do allow for the curing of the defect or deficits which are being objected to. So that developer still can pull that project back, modify, or work within the thought centers of our staff. They are not denied permanently, but they do get the chance to overcome whatever the deficit may be. So I think that when that occurs, that even goes further to causing a public to perceive that our body is caving in to the developers, we're caving in. No, that's due process. They get the chance to fix whatever's wrong. And when they come back and they've been objected, they've been objected to, and when they come back and cure it and we pass it, it makes it seem like something strange happened. I mean, they were just caved in. And that's just something that public generally, in the specialness of which this process work, oftentimes those final points are not recognized. Commissioner Dozier and Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for staying later. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for letting us go a bit later. We needed to focus on legislative. I guess I'm going to first pick up on quasi judicial and just, you know, an example county attorney just used, and then I'll back into general comments about recommendations and where we are in the comp plan. So I think the Southwood example is actually rather interesting. One lot was proposed to change after probably a couple of decades of, and let me say it a different way, we had the agreements in place, area was supposed to be conservation, and one lot was proposed to change. In talking with the residents of that area, after this decision, after the appeal was or the denial was sustained, correct, I'm using the correct language, yes, our decision was affirmed by the magistrate. It was interesting to hear from them because they said, they acknowledged they were more affluent than a lot of folks in town. They were able to come together, hire an attorney to look at the evidence, and they presented a very strong case. And as county attorney just said, we need that substantial evidence. It wasn't just that they disagreed, but they had the wherewithal to get the expert support outside and bring that case forward. Most people in this community, most neighborhood associations, HOAs, most individuals cannot go out and hire their own attorney to push back on a quasi judicial. Now, I am not saying that all quasi judicial should be denied by any stretch. I mean, I support, I think, most everyone. That was a very rare case because it does line up with our rules. But I think we do have to recognize there may be times where some evidence could be brought forward if a neighborhood, if individuals had the wherewithal to do it. I'm not sure the county is in a position to fill that gap necessarily. There have been discussions actually with this group of residents about an ombudsman or some other person that could offer some advice that's not attached to the county others. That's not something we've really dug into. But I wanted to raise that point because on the quasi judicial specifically, I think there is an equity issue there that we have to be aware of. Again, that would be rare cases, but it happens. For the recommendations here, and I want to draw back because Chairman just said, you know, we are charged often with adhering to, you know, what the developer wants or what a owner of property wants more than the public, whether they are directly impacted adjacent property owners or others. On quasi judicial side, our rules are in place. When you apply for a building permit, when you apply for zoning, when you apply for comp plan, we're dealing with the rules that are in place at that time. So for quasi judicial, it is our job to look at those policies in advance, to look at the comp plan, to look at zoning in advance of those applications, right? Otherwise, we're dealing with those rules. So the notice requirements for quasi judicial, I kind of understand what the recommendation is there because that is very unique and we've probably had other steps in the process at that point. For the comprehensive plan though, what we have seen in recent years is a lot of outcry, a lot of public testimony, and even members of this board and the city choosing to vote against large scale amendments, particularly urban service area expansion at the adoption hearing. And I'm not challenging anyone who, you know, decided one way or another on recent amendments. That makes sense to me because we have so much concern from surrounding neighborhoods and it is far more than 1,000 feet or 1,500 feet that would be impacted. And we're going to use, I'm going to use the example of April Road and Southwood Plantation. People coming to us about quality of life, the traffic, all those types of things, and it was a sliver. I mean, just, you know, it was a very slim majority that voted in favor of those USA expansion. And I'm just going to say it right now, I've got major pushback for supporting the expansion of the USA in that decision. To me, the rules were in place. They felt, it was consistent with how we had looked at comp plan amendments in the past. The next phase of this, and you all get into this in the item, is looking at the land use element and others. And that's where we can look at how we assess those, those large scale amendments and whether or not our criteria needs to be bolstered or not or whatever. So I'm going to leave that aside. I'm glad we're finally there. I'm sure you all, Artie, it's been years and years and years. Yes, we are very glad we finally have a great, and, yes, actually, Barry, this lasted through two, three jobs, right?
Yes.
Three different positions now. Yeah, you've been looking at getting to a consultant for this. So that's fantastic. We're moving in the right direction. But so I'm going to go to the notice, and here's where I think we need to talk about this. This was a good analysis and I really appreciated the legal requirements of what a legal notice means when we send it out and who may challenge that final decision. But there is one line in the item, "Other forms of notice are more appropriate for community outreach and transparency." That's really what we're talking about here. That was the conversation back in March when this first came up. That's why I made the motion and we got unanimous support. It was public outreach and transparency, and I will add, giving the public an opportunity to comment and ask questions. So I'm going to start here. Based on your line in the item, it sounds like there is a distinction between the formal legal notice, 1,000 or 1,500 feet, and some other kind of, other forms of notice which are more appropriate to community outreach, transparency, and public engagement. Is that correct? Is there some other form of notice that would not trigger those legal requirements?
There are many other ways to get information out there like that. We do, again, an exceptional job in that regard. You can go to our website and see all the active, you know, ongoing and large projects on there. So we're disseminating this information over multiple outlets. Much what's in the law obviously is a bit antiquated and requires us to print things in the newspaper and send, well, not in this case, but the state statutes don't require necessarily that we send you a mailed notice, but that's traditionally how these things have been done. So yeah, there are other avenues and there's more and more each day for us to get that, the word out regarding these sort of things, just to keep people educated.
So let me ask it a little more specific, Artie, before you jump in. Could we mail people something, a notice of proceedings, that did not constitute a legal notice? Just, hey, here's your comp plan amendments that are coming this cycle. And the reason why I'm asking this is unless you're super engaged in the comp plan process, you're not going to the website. You're not going to that open house in December. We know that the normal crew of folks who go to those things, they are watching what we're doing, watching what y'all are doing, they're watching these amendments, maybe they've got an HOA or one person in the neighborhood that has flagged something. They're not going on the website. They're not signing up for notices. I wish everybody would sign up for notices for the planning department, Artie. I mean, I wish you had lots and lots, many, yes, but we don't. I'm glad we're getting into social media. So knowing, and not everybody gets a newspaper, not everybody has access to online. So if we're talking about really letting people know what's coming, could we mail them something and just say, here's the comp plan amendments that are happening this year? And it wouldn't trigger the legal?
I would actually defer to legal in terms of what would constitute a direct mail notice.
Well, one thing that when we're talking about comp plan, that's legislative, right? So let's take off our quasi judicial hat, where we're talking about standing when we're actually past that point where we're not making the policy, we're actually utilizing the land development code to implement the policy, right? So it's a different standard for standing at the comp plan level. There's nothing that says you can't. I don't know in that context that it would result in any presumption of standing since it's basically a form of legislative policymaking generally by the board. I think the issue becomes more, are you talking about sending one to like every household in the county times however much it would take to?
I'm talking about a mile, if we have a large scale, excuse me, Madam County Attorney, I'm sorry for interrupting you there. If we've got a large scale amendment, expanding the urban service area, DR Horton size amendment, 1,000 feet is nothing, even 30 property owners is nothing really for notice. There was far more. There were people in Wynwood and Golden Pheasant and Grassroots and others, some of whom got noticed, but lots of them didn't. So if we had one mile, say, same as the HOA for every property owner, and sent them a notice, no, I'm just thinking of something like that, that there is an amendment, could be a list of all the amendments and hey, your neighborhood is within a mile of one of them and only large scale. I will add to that that this item is written as if the legal concerns apply to both comp plan and quasi judicial. The explanation today really unpacked that and I appreciate the questions that others asked. But the legal concerns are not as stringent, as you said, on comp plan. And I'm going to bring this in for a landing in a second because there's a reason why I'm asking all these questions. But I'm just getting to whether or not the legal issues, because it sounded like, when I first read this, it sounded like, no, we can't do any of this. Comp plan's not as stringent. And then just, just a letter within a mile of people, you know, from a large scale amendment. That's all.
People could try to use it to assert standing with the, if you're, if you're making a distinction based on pro committee, someone could try to use it for standing. There's no doubt. Whether they would be successful in doing that for something that's effectively a legislative decision by the body as opposed to a quasi judicial, I don't know.
Okay, I'll leave this alone right now because it is, I know how much our wonderful county attorney and other county attorneys hate being put on the spot for decisions on the dais. So I would suggest to my colleagues here, that's something that I would love to see more analysis on, that if there was a letter even with a disclaimer that said, you know, if you're within 1,000 feet, you get this notice, if you're within a mile, we just want to let you know that something's happening. And here's why. I'm going to go back to this for just a second. In this process that we have, and some of you have seen it a few times, some of us have seen it a lot of times, only the diehards really go to that open house in December, right? I mean, we're getting nods. That's really, it's the diehards. Then we get to city-county workshop. There's no public comment there. The first time, and yes, you're going to say, we got planning commission, we got other places, they can raise public comment, but typically that's the diehards also, those are the people who got the letter in their mailbox. The first time our commissions hear public comment is the transmittal hearing. And we are charged all the time with either adhering to what the developers say or trying to slow growth because we got questions about something, right? And it's, we're all between rocks and hard places. We want an efficient, good process, we want to listen to our constituents, they want to talk to us. They don't, I mean, due respect to the planning commission, they want to go and talk to them too, but they, we're their elected reps. They want to come and talk to us. We're the final decision maker. So more than notice, I actually think there needs to be one more meeting for large scale amendments in between the workshop and the transmittal hearing to accept public comment in a public forum for us to ask questions and then get to transmittal. I'm not sure that would change much. I mean, in the final scheme, in adoption and transmittal, but it would allow us to refine things and the public in this community is asking for more time and they're not going to know about these things. Typically, we see more after that workshop because that's when it ends up in the paper. This is why I brought this up this spring. This is why I made that motion. And yeah, I'm going to drop it in here. Mayor said at that table that he would bring the same motion over to the city. They've not taken it up, they chose not to join us for this workshop. This conversation should be happening with the city as well, absolutely. Because there's a whole lot more that happens within the city. But expanding the USA is always going to be a county thing. So I, I mean, I would love to hear my colleagues, you know, comments about this, whether or not you think this is on the right track. We can't make a unilateral decision about this. But I think bringing back an item on refining, is there a letter that we could send that doesn't necessarily trigger standing, that maybe our county attorney could be comfortable with? And looking at one additional public meeting prior to that transmittal meeting where the public could actually ask questions and it would be the only meeting that they could ask questions at before, of us, before the transmittal hearing. I think those two things should be explored and I think it would help us more efficient, expedite, and give more transparency and engagement with the public. And, Mr. Chair, I'm not making a motion right now. That's going to be my motion, but I would really love to hear others' thoughts.
Let me just respond real quickly. I think I'm going to make a comment that sounds perfectly dumb. And that is that the application process of persons seeking to do something with their land frankly is not our business. It becomes our business when it bottlenecks in the process which you isolate it, that we hear it first when it's transmittal. And it's then that And it's then that we hear the staff recommendation, we usually hear from the applicant, and we hear the opposition from an HOA, and then we're the adjudicators. I say it's not our business in the same sense that on courtroom, second floor, third floor, the judges there typically are not the ones who are the moving parties of a case. Most of the stuff downstairs is not their business, but they are the adjudicators. They listen, they hear the facts, they weigh out, and they make decisions. That's sort of how we are postured in terms of our comp plan process. We're the adjudicators. We don't get into the evidence, we don't get to talk to the witnesses, we can't talk to them. The judge is downstairs, they don't get to hear the case before it comes to them, they don't talk to the, to the witness, they can't. They wait for it to come through that process. We are postured in that same way. So I understand well, and our empathy to citizens, but that slide that had all those blue, 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 blue thingies, there was citizen input at every, at least its potential at every stage, right there, that one right there. Those are citizens on one, two, three, five, seven, eight, and nine. Citizens are open to the public. So you don't get in there, but ultimately, even, it's not what citizens think, it's the right of what the property owner has to do with their property.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we're talking about a very narrow slice of this. Quasi judicial is off the table. That's really where you're getting into the legal justification. This is about a large-scale amendment to the urban service area, and you, sir, voted against the D.R. Horton amendment once we got to adoption. A lot of folks had voted for it at the workshop, voted for it at transmittal, but you heard more from the public, and you voted against it at adoption once we'd already gone through everything. With respect, I'm just using that as an example. That is, that's the only type of amendments I'm looking at here. Major 50-acre-plus amendments to our comprehensive plan. And it's that exact, that exact point, when we do weigh impact to traffic, impact the environment, impact the quality of life, that's when we weigh those things. It's more subjective. It shouldn't be too subjective, in my opinion, because we got rules, the comp plan, and the guys are nodding with that, but that's the only narrow space that I'm talking about. And all those opportunities for direct public engagement, most people in our community don't hear about things until they get to number six, which is the workshop, and that's when there's an article in the newspaper, or it's on the radio or something. That's all I'm talking about.
Well, I'm certain that as a District One Commissioner, certainly, we would not give to the United States of America's largest builder of houses a permit or support to receive urban services that they were going to likely receive from the city, had already contracted through the city to expand the reach of sewer, when people are there within the city, urban service area, on the inside of Capitol Circle, who didn't have that, is inequitable, unjust, unreasonable, and just totally asinine that the world's biggest, America's biggest home builder could get and receive advantages that poor people don't get inside. That's why I voted against them. So it made sense to me, and on some votes that I take, it need only make sense to me. The consideration of the citizens who live in the area, that's why they vote for me, because they know I'm going to often stand for them. And I certainly, I mean, something like, just compare some oranges and apples, the Amazon situation, which we gave some millions of dollars to, you know, I mean, that's 1.4 trillion, 1.4 billion dollar business, that we gave common citizens some money to come talk to us. You're dealing with the bigs like that, Amazons and the Hortons. I think about how do we take care of the littles first? That's a priority to me. All the other commissioners who want to be out here by four o'clock, I know we can do it, Mr. Minor, okay, and that'll be it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Really good discussion, really good discussion. And Commissioner Dozier, you raised some really good points that, that I think are definitely worthy of our, of our time. You know, I've been on the commission for four short years, and we've dealt with some pretty major comp plan amendments that have come across this dais. And what Commissioner Dozier says, I think I agree with. Yes, there are a lot of opportunities for people to provide input, a lot, but time and time again, the, for whether, for whatever reason, we, the general public is not truly aware of these large comp plan amendments until we have that joint workshop, then hits the paper, then hits the, you know, WCTV and WTXL. That's when, that's when people really start to pay attention about what is going on. And that's happened multiple times since, since I've been elected, you know, four years ago. I don't know if these ideas are quite fully baked yet, but I like the idea of where Commissioner Dozier is going in terms of having another meeting before transmittal, because how many, at least three or four times, we now have had the public come to us at the transmittal hearing, begging us for more time to meet with us and talk about some of these amendments. And Commissioner Proctor, I think I know what you're saying about property rights. Yes, we have property rights in this country, thank God, but they do have limits. I can't take my residential neighborhood, tear my house down, and put a six-floor, a six-floor office building in there with a need for 40 parking spots that don't exist. That has an impact on my neighbors. And that's not a perfect analogy, but it does illustrate that we all are in this together. And yes, we have property rights, but when it comes to comp plan amendments, large-scale comp plan amendments, we all in the community should have a say, and the public should have a say, and they do. But too often, they understand the details of what we're thinking about doing when it comes to transmittal. And I'm not sure exactly where, we need to think about this a little bit more, but I think the idea of another meeting before transmittal, after the workshop, after the public has had a chance to really think about some of the things we're doing, would be helpful. And we all ran with the idea, and we, when we went for election, you know, we talked to the public, and I know you all have heard the same thing. The public tells us time and time again, by the time we hear about something, you guys have already made a decision. And I'm not sure exactly how this is going to transpire, but the discussion we're having right now, I think would go a long way toward addressing that big concern that we hear from the public time and time again. So there's not a motion on the table, but I think this is a good discussion that is addressing a need that I've seen that needs to be addressed in the last four years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So let me look up on the board. So you're saying that between six and seven, there should be a 6A to accommodate the public further knowing on the bone. So you'd like to see a 6A between six and seven?
Mr. Chairman, that sounds to me like it's a promising idea. You know, this is the first time we've really had a discussion, a chance to talk about it amongst ourselves, but I think it has a lot of merit. It certainly merits further discussion.
Counsel, how could we situate a 6A to add to, and are we operating under state statute which sets forth that process, or does each county set its own standards with respect to the comp plan amendment process?
Well, the state statute certainly set a minimum process that you have to follow. I don't think there's anything that says we couldn't add a meeting. Now, I would also look though to Artie for his input on what that would do to a timeline. I know once the joint transmittal public hearing occurs, we are on the clock, so to speak, and there are certain statutory timeframes that we have to meet, but I always think of the, at the beginning of the comp plan amendment process, that slide that Artie puts up that shows like the process and the timeframes and everything else. I don't know what it would do to the overall timeframe to add another meeting in there, but it certainly is legally permissible to do that, but I would defer to Artie in terms of what that would do otherwise.
Artie, what can we do for 6A? Commissioner Dozier and Commissioner Minor made great points that we need to stroke with the public, and to here after six, we want another step to get with the public. And I think that it shouldn't just be two people. I mean, it should be some minimal threshold on those large scales. So, I mean, I don't think two, three people voicing something equals a 6A meeting.
Mr. Chair, if I might, before Artie jumps in here, there is a lot to unpack here, and it should be clear, nothing changes this comp plan cycle. This is our schedule for this cycle going into 2023. I don't want anyone to think that any of these suggestions would be impacting what you all already have begun in doing the notices and everything else, I assume, correct? I would like to make a motion, I know Commissioner Cummings had a comment here, but the motion, just in case this helps you, that I was going to make was to ask staff to bring back an agenda item for the joint workshop. And there's going to be a workshop on the urban, and if that's too much to pack into that day, but it's the one day we sit with the city, and this would have to be a joint decision. But my motion would be to bring back an agenda item, to flesh this out, to give our staff time to look at the legal issues, to look at the schedule, see where that type of meeting might, and 6A, and going with Commissioner Minor's suggestion, where that might fall. And yes, specifically, it would only happen in years when we have large-scale amendments. It may not be necessary every year, and the staff would know that by the time they close that cycle. So, so I just wanted to be clear that my motion today would just be to bring back an agenda item to look at that notification nuance and to look at this schedule for large-scale amendments.
Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner Dozier, I hear a second by Commissioner Minor.
Well, okay, that would be, I was going to wait for Commissioner Cummings' comments first, sir, but I got a motion in a second.
The dialogue answered my question.
Very good.
Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, ma'am, for jumping in there, but I thought that might help.
We have a motion from Commissioner Dozier, staff to bring back, and second. All in favor, please say aye. Passage unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very, very good. All right, Artie, you wanted to say something?
I was just going to add that you kind of have the flexibility to do that now. A good example of that would be when we had the Walani comp plan amendments, and we were given the direction to continue the public hearing and go out and engage the public. So while this is our standard process, there are opportunities throughout that process to say, hey, we would like to continue this to a later date, and we want you to engage the public and do certain things. There've been a couple of times over the years where that's been, but I think Walani is kind of the big example where we did 20-something charrettes and virtual workshops and all of that. So you kind of have that flexibility now to do a lot of what I think you're asking for.
Mr. Chair, one last comment on, I'm so sorry, you were about to say something.
I was about to say, we're going to call this the Minor Dozier Amendment for posterity.
No, I'm.
6A will be the Minor Dozier.
Yeah, there you go. It is, all of this discussion, I appreciate you all, to use the chairman's phrase, one last time, Mr. Chair, walking with me.
Walk with me.
There we go, one last time. All of this is to avoid, and Artie, I'm glad Chairman K. asked you to make that comment, to avoid the conflict we see at the end. That's not helpful for the board, it's not helpful for the public. I mean, let's be honest, most often these amendments, comp plan amendments, others, they're gonna, they're gonna pass. They are. Getting them right by the time we get to that final vote, making sure that we do it without conflict with the public's trust, that's the goal here. And I don't, I don't want any of us, I don't want our staff to be in a position where at the final hour, we make a decision, oh, we need to extend this. I mean, that should be a rare case. Walani was a rare case, I will say that. So it should happen if necessary. But if we can get ahead of that and avoid some of that conflict and controversy, why not? So that's it. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Here are no other comments. Commissioner Dozier, were you prepared to make a motion for options one and two?
Oh, we just made a motion for the other party. Yes, sure, I'll make a motion for, thank you, Mr. County Administrator, for that. Yes, motion for option one and two.
Okay, we have a motion for one and two. I hear Commissioner Minor seconding that, and hearing no other discussion. All in favor, please say aye. It passes unanimously. We want to thank staff for sharing this. I think Commissioner Dozier makes a wonderful parting recommendation that this is the Bible for growth, and certainly, majority of it is occurring within the incorporated area. So a joint sit-down meeting with the city commission on this measure is warranted. Those things being said, are there any other comments? Hearing none, we consider ourselves adjourned.